And join me in the pledge, please.
My pledge to lead this stupid flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and created for all.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on clause or judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes, regardless of the number of items.
Thank you, City Clerk. Just the fact that you read that long thing makes you my hero. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 13th and 27th of the regular city council meetings and the July 20th special city council meeting?
We'll move.
Second.
I have a motion for Member Jordan, a second by Vice Mayor. Roll call, vote. Yes.
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 Nelson and Member Stokel.
Yes.
Minutes pass unanimously. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council. We do have some agenda item changes I'd like to request Council consider. Item 9F, we staff had originally had a request to table that item. The applicant now has asked to withdraw that item. So 9F will be a request to withdraw, so you won't hear that. And also, staff has requested that item 10A be withdrawn.
Can we do those both at the same time?
You may. And I have one additional add. During special presentations and recognitions, we'd like to have our Water Resource Director, Mr. Sean Stauffer, update Council on the boil water notice that was issued on Friday.
I would appreciate that. Can we pass those all three at one time?
Can.
Change to the agenda? Can we just go change to the agenda as stated by City Manager?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Move.
Second.
I have a motion. Member Stokel got it in a second, please. Get her in the minutes. All in favor? Say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. Before, this is where I'm going to move into another topic. Real quick, I don't get to do this often, but as a mayor, you get to do this once in a while. So I'm going to throw out there and City Attorney guide me on what I need to do here, if anything. I just want to toss out there today, had a phone conference with Mr. McCarion from Parish Medical Center, and Member Jordan, be prepared, I'm sure I'm going to shift to your direction. But if we don't know, we should know that the, and I'll be the first to tell you that I really felt like the game was over when it came to COVID. And it's not. And basically, I would call it overtime because it's still out there. And without going into great numbers, and again, Member Jordan, and just a moment, I say Member Jordan because he's a member of the, as a matter of fact, I think you're the chairman of the board of the Parish Medical Center. So I'd be remiss if I didn't go into the direction on this topic. But I will say, when our discussion with Mr. McCarion, CEO of Parish Medical Center, they're pulling out all the stops to take care of what they got. The biggest surprise to me, probably, was the fact that the highest number of patients they had in the COVID surge in last year, when we thought that was the biggest thing in, you know, going, was 24, I believe. Maybe it's 27. Today, at Parish Medical Center, we have 74. That's almost, that is basically three times what we had last year when it was the big game. And I don't mean game tribally. I mean, we were in the midst of a tough battle. That's probably a better word. So I think we would be, I would be remiss as the mayor if I didn't say something at this time. I don't know that we need to get into the politics of a resolution and all of that, but I certainly will make my statement, if I represent no one else, I represent myself, we need to get the vaccine. And I don't know how else to say it. I certainly hope that doesn't become political. I am not, you know, I can't tell everybody and anybody what to do. I don't pretend to be able to do that, nor would I. But I would say that, again, if you listen to the numbers, the word we got, if for some reason after you get the vaccine, you get the COVID, you could possibly get it bad enough to go into the hospital for two or three days. If you get the COVID without the vaccine, there's no telling. And you know where I'm going with that. Member Jordan, is there some things you want to add? And if not, I will just simply let the council speak on this topic. I think it's extremely important. And again, I think we would be remiss if we didn't say, let's get it in gear. This game's not over. Get the vaccine. Member Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate this opportunity, and I really hope that we take this seriously. As an example, I also have a charter school in Viera. My principal actually has COVID, and she had the shot, and she had a temperature of 105 degrees. She felt that if she hadn't had the vaccination, she would not be here today. This is extremely, extremely, I don't get it when it comes down to your health versus politics. Politics cannot be that important to you that you would lose your life over. There are people I know in this room who, early on in their lives, they've taken drugs, and they thought it was a good thing to do because it gave them a high. It was destroying your body. But today, you're saying you're not going to take a vaccine because it's going to harm your body in some kind of way. When you were young, you did all kinds of things to your body, and it was okay. This is about saving lives, and I think a lot of people really care about the economy. They care about how they can make a living, and they care about their family. And just to update what the mayor was saying, we don't have 74 COVID patients now. As of today, we have 71 COVID patients. And of those COVID patients, 94% of them were not vaccinated. 94%. We had 14 that were ill in ICU right now. And we also have 17 who are being vented right now. The unfortunate idea, unfortunate thing about we as a public, when it doesn't touch you, you think you're a super person. But once it touches you, then you say, I wish I had gotten the vaccine. This is nothing to play with. This is not about politics. This is really, you know, some people say, I don't trust government. They're doing this, they're doing that. This is really about saving your life. If you can't understand, I don't know what else you can do except say, we love you, but if you don't do what is reasonable, you're going to find yourself in a place that you never want to be. I always think about it. Think of it this way. If you're riding a motorcycle, and one of the things we have in this country, we have this free freedom, where we don't have to wear a helmet. But I will guarantee you that if you're in an accident and you don't have a helmet on, on a motorcycle, I guarantee you, the thoughts that you're having as you're going down, because the head is the heaviest part of your body, you're going to wish you had that helmet on. So this is just like that. You don't want to catch this virus. You need to trust that the people who are talking, and I'm going to say a little bit about Dr. Fauci, because he has been vilified to no end because he's a scientist, and someone said, well, you shouldn't trust him because he keep changes his, changes his mind. Whether, everywhere you go, and someone was talking about a football game. If you go into a game and the coach calls a play, and they say, this is how we're going to win the game. Well, as they're calling, as they're playing the game, they find out that the opponent is doing things differently than what was on the video. So the coach calls the players back up and say, hey, we need to change what we're going to do. That's exactly what's going on with science. As we learn more, we have to change things. I remember when Fauci said, we don't need to wear a mask. Then he said, we have to wear a mask. And he said this and that. Well, he's only trying, along with other scientists, he's only trying to give you the best information that we have for that day. So the bottom line to me is, guys, if you love yourselves, if you love your family, and if you love America, we are not going to get out of this thing by being on one side or the other. We need to get vaccinated, just like the measles, just like the smallpox, and it's like a lot of other diseases, where the masks had to get the vaccination, or we're going to eliminate ourselves. When you say that your rights are being taken away from you, well, guess what? This COVID vaccine will take your life away from you.
Good?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm good with all of that, Member Jordan, except you took my football analogy.
And I'm not a football fan, sir.
And with that, I truly, and from my personal point of view, I'm going to kind of stay away from the Fauci or the whatever. I will say that I was, certainly you heard me when I started off, I'm misinformed, think the game's over, we're good to go, and we are not. And again, I want to also say a word out there to all the people at Parish Medical Center who are working very, very hard. Again, talking to Mr. McCarion, they are exhausted. They are looking to bring in 40 contract nurses because they're overwhelmed. They are turning places in their hospital into ICU units that aren't made to be ICU units. So I mean, it's, we are blessed to have Parish Medical Center as a huge part of our community, and I can't say that enough. And again, we had given them a proclamation, the mayor's proclamation, on thanking them for what a great job they did. And again, I think when I gave it to them, I thought it was in the fourth quarter. We're still playing. And that vaccine is important. And if, truthfully, this is silly, I probably got 27 people out there watching on TV. So if any of you 27 people or anybody else feels like you want to talk to me about the vaccine or whatever, I got the vaccine, and I'm glad I did. I'll tell you that. It's a scary time. So with that, I-
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. You reminded me of one other thing, and it's so important. Our nurses and our doctors are working overtime, double time. Unfortunately, with this whole virus thing, as he alluded to, we are actually having to hire contracted employees, and they are not coming cheap at all. We have nurses that we pay a certain amount of money, and then we have these contracted employees who are getting over $100 an hour. We're trying to give our people pay double pay, and they're saying, we just can't work anymore. It's too many hours. And it is really, it's unfortunate, but as we move one out of the hospital, we have another one come in. It's not like it's stopping. It's just getting worse and worse. So we, and honestly, we got to wear our masks. You know, some people say, and I got to tell you this, the principal that got sick, they actually, she had worn her mask religiously every day except one day. When two kids came in, elementary kids came in to talk to her and give her donors, she took her mask off, and the next thing she knew, she had the virus. All this year, she was religious about wearing the mask, and this was the one day she took it off. And these kids not only gave it to the principal, but it gave it to her parents also. So.
And again, and we're not going to belabor this. We're not going to get into a political vote or anything like that. I just felt it important that we speak of this right now. And I also want to add one last thing about parish clerical, food services, housekeeping, they're all working hard to get through this. And, you know, I'll be very candid, I had the COVID, I'm certainly not the only one, I had it a year ago about now, a year ago about now. So I had that going for me when it came, you know, it's time to, are you going to be safe or not? Well, I got the vaccination anyway. Now, should we be double safe? I'm really good. But because I think it's important enough to people out there that might just not be sure, I'm going back to doing this. Not for me so much, I wouldn't think, but you never know. So with that, you know, for those of us that are too cool to get a vaccination or wear a mask or any, I'm pretty dead gum cool. Call me. And I mean, I'm half kidding, obviously. And you guys say, you're really kidding. You're not that cool. But what I am saying is, there are people out there, and you know, and I'll be honest with you, sometimes it's, you know, I'm still coaching, 40th year, I'm coaching football right now, and I can tell you that some of the people who are the coolest are the football players. And they don't, they're untouchables, they think. So that's the kind of people I'm talking about. Let me talk to you and tell you, go get the goddamn shot. Don't be a chicken. Vice Mayor?
So I was actually going to bring this up at the end of the meeting, and I think it would be nice if we can't mandate anything but to ask people to socially distance as they come into City Hall and City Council meetings, and to consider wearing a mask. I don't think that's asking too much. I mean, you know, we can't-
I think the ask part, and again, as I said earlier, I hope not to get into the whole political thing, because then it defers what we're trying to, or disperses what we're trying to say. We're saying here, and I think ultimately as a united front, we'll come out of this, you know, do what you need to do to be safe, do what you need to do to keep other people safe. And look at the stats, people. You've got the vaccine, you're going to, you're going to, you could get it, but you're not going to, I say this because nothing seems certain, but you're not going to be one of the, you know, what'd you say, 99.3 or something, or, you know, unvaccinated?
Yeah.
So those are the numbers, and numbers don't lie. So I don't disagree. I'm not sure that as this goes on, we might not readjust a few things in here, and I'm not sure. I don't want to say that, but I know there's been discussion on, if this keeps going, there may be some changes coming.
And the reason I say this, as I talked to some people at the hospital, and they were indicating basically five people a day are dying. And so-
It's the real deal.
I don't want it to be any of us. I don't want it to be any of our community. So that concerns me.
Member Robinson?
There may be those out there that, well, they know me, and they wanted me to respond to that. And because I'm a man of the cloth or clergy, I'm going to leave it as this, and as I tell my congregation, I'm in favor of everyone, if you desire, to take the shot, because there's nothing that is biblically destructive or anything about it, and I support that. But if you, my total thoughts on that would have to bring a lot of things into play that I, we try to keep away from the government. So I'm glad that the mayor said that we don't want to make it political, and, but I am in total support of, if you desire to get the shot and the vaccine, and I think, and I believe that it will help and do what science has said it will do. But the rest of my conversation dealing with other things, I will hold my peace. Thank you.
Amen. All right, with that, again, because I don't want it to become political or anything like that, I don't want to get into a proclamation or a resolution or anything else. I just wanted our council to be able to have a say at this very tough time, and I certainly wanted to recognize the work that the people at Parish Medical Center are doing for our family and our friends. City Manager?
Yes, sir. At this time, Mr. Sean Stauffer will update Council on the water boil notice, and no actions required by Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So I just want to take a few minutes to kind of recap what occurred this Friday for those that are not aware, and also make some clarifications and some explanations. So on Friday evening, my department issued a boil water notice for the city of Titusville. And the reason why we did that is because we found E. coli in our raw water samples. And so I just want to explain, make sure everyone understands what raw water is. That is the water that we pump out of the ground, and then we send all of that raw water to our treatment plant. And our treatment plant is designed to clean and disinfect that raw water, including the removal of bacteria. And so I'm sure the question be, well, if it removes it, why would you issue the boil water notice? And so the reason why we do that, first and foremost, it's out of an abundance of caution. We also want to be transparent with our customers about what is in their water, what's going on. And also, we want to be very protective of our most vulnerable customers out there. And that's the reason why we do this and why we communicate it. I know that there were some questions about the timing, and so I'd just like to explain that the sample's taken on August 4th, the results came back on the 6th. The reason for that is because it is a 48-hour test to determine if there is E. coli in the water. When we issued the boil water notice, we put it on the city's website. We also put it on the city police and fire Facebook page. We issued a news release to media outlets, and we also completed a reverse 911. And I've spoken to a lot of customers that did not receive that 911. And so I wanted to explain a little bit about what it is. That's done, produced by the Brevard County EOC. If you did not get a call over this event, you can log on to their website and sign up for a service called Alert Brevard. And it's very simple. It's a login and password, and then you can identify all of your numbers that you'd like to be reached at. They can send you emails, text messages, or calls to your cell phone or your landline. So I just wanted to be real clear about that, because I've answered that question a number of times during this event. The other thing that's great about Alert Brevard is it's not just boil water notices. It includes weather emergencies, Amber alerts. There's a long list of information that they can provide to you, the citizens and council members, about what's going on. One of the other things that I wanted to add, during this period before the boil water notice, we had taken multiple distribution samples, and those are the ones that are in the drinking water system, the part that we drink. And all of those test results came back and did not show any E. coli in them. So I just want to assure the customers that while we found it on the raw water side, we did not find it on the treated water side. The samples that we took on the 6th, when they came back, they showed no E. coli in the water, and that is the reason why we rescinded the boil water notice. And so we went through the exact same process with the notification. We also completed a 911 to all the people that are registered on that. We are still investigating the source of this contamination. We don't know at this moment what the source is. We did go out yesterday, and we sampled all 38 wells that were operating during this period, and those results are due back either late tonight or very early tomorrow morning. So we should have a better handle on what happened, what the source was, and be able to provide a little bit more information about our steps moving forward. One of the things I always like to do internally is when we go through an event like this, I like to identify some lessons learned. And just want to share with you some of the things, after I spoke to a number of our customers, that I think that will add to our process and do different in similar incidents. I think one of the things that our customers really wanted was to know what steps they needed to take after the boil water notice was rescinded. And typically, some of that typical advice is, go ahead and throw out your ice, or actually, you should put it on a plant, put it on your favorite house plant. There was also questions about flushing the water from the home, and I think that is, that would be good due diligence to go to the water faucet that is farthest from the street, let it run for four or five minutes, just to make sure that everything is taken care of, and that's good due diligence moving forward. One of the other things that we're going to be doing is, we're going to be getting training from Brevard EOC, and so we will actually be able to, city staff will actually be able to issue the reverse 911s. And so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to have a little more timely response, since we'll be able to do it in-house. And that training is scheduled, I believe, in two weeks. Once again, you know, I wanted to make sure that I promoted Alert Brevard, because that is one of the best ways to reach out to every one of the customers in an incident of this size, because we have over 47,000 residents. So it is very difficult to contact them all at once. That's really one of the best ways to do it, particularly if they're not watching TV or they're not on the web. And I think one of the other things that we have also done, we've worked with the lab to look at our testing procedures, and they have identified a 24-hour test that they can do. So from now on, we'll be moving forward with a 24-hour test that can detect E. coli. So that helps that turnaround time. It makes us more- So, that helps that turnaround time, it makes us more timely, and gives our information much more current to our customers. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council has.
Council? Vice Mayor.
How often do you test? Is it like every twenty-four hours, every forty-eight hours?
So, the, the raw water, the raw water sampling spots are tested once a week.
Okay. So, all of them are tested once a week, or is it random?
No, we sample, there are three locations that we sample weekly, and those are combined sources from the three different wellfields.
Okay. I'm sure I followed.
So, particularly for the Area Four Well Field, which is located up in the north end of Brevard County, that where the pipeline connects to the water plant, we have a sample tap there, so we can sample all fifteen wells at once from that location.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Member Stokel.
Yes, thank you. Just for you guys to know, I was the one that sent the one-page document.
We figured that out.
Yeah.
We figured that.
Okay, so to clarify to what Vice Mayor was saying, if we test once a week, why did we test again on August 5th? What prompted that test? If we just tested on the 4th?
So, the, the forty-eight hour test is a two-step procedure. The first step, the first twenty-four hours, you determine whether or not you have a group of bacteria called total coliform. Total coliform bacteria is a general name used for a whole family of different kinds of total coliform bacteria. Now, not all total coliform bacteria are harmful to humans. E. coli happens to be one that can make you sick. So, that is what happens in the second twenty-four hour of that test. So, on the 5th, out of an abundance of caution, when we did see that we had total coliform bacteria, we went ahead and grabbed another sample just in case.
So, coliform doesn't prompt the boil water? That's okay, because it goes, it's cleared through our normal treatment process? It wouldn't prompt that, the E. coli is what prompted it?
That is correct. It's because the E. coli is harmful to humans.
Okay. And then, just to clarify, how did, so, if, it's a forty-hour process, how did we, how were we able to go from, on the 7th, being able to be cleared from test on the 6th? Wouldn't we have waited till the 8th to lift it, or how did we get those results quicker?
Because we did the twenty-four hour test.
Okay, so we were able to access that. Typically, we just do the forty-eight hour, in this situation, we found a quicker test.
Because it was a critical moment, we wanted to go as fast as we could to make sure that our customers were updated as soon as possible.
Okay. And then, in regards to the question of what's being, what's needed to be able to rescind the order, you had written five consecutive tests that show no E. coli essentially. Is there any direction on the amount of time that needs to be in between those five consecutive tests?
No, they are taken all at the same time.
Okay, so as long as all five are cleared, we're able to?
That's correct. That is in accordance with DEP regulations.
Okay. In regards to the communication, were we, because I had some citizens say, I didn't get it, and then I did get it, so moving forward, I'm just wondering, were we able to call, or is the call done through the reverse nine-one-one? And then, what about the email or text? If customers have signed up for that, either through their bill pay or whatnot with their email, were we able to send out a bulk email, or is that possible in the future if we weren't?
So, to be real clear, the phone numbers that are associated with your water bills is not the same database that Brevard County EOC uses for the reverse nine-one-one?
So, would there be, would there be a way to use the phone number that is on their water bill, or do you not have that technology?
I think when, in the next two weeks, when we go to training, we'll see if that's something that they could import into their system.
Okay. What about with the email? Would that be possible too?
We'll have to check and see.
Okay. Just, any communication that we can do so citizens are aware, I think that was the biggest thing, like, some found out about it, social media, word of mouth, so any way that we can put it out there, I think would help them to feel better. Okay. I think that is all my questions for you. Thank you.
Member Jordan.
Thank you, Sean. I appreciate your explanation of what happened. Of course, everyone's concerned when it comes down to water, and when it's safe and when it's not. As far as the E. coli is concerned, has this been the first time that we've had this problem?
No, I was aware, one of our long-term employees told me a story, about twenty years ago, we did have a well that was found to have E. coli in it, and it was a well located just north of Dunn Air Park. And if you remember, there used to be a county animal shelter there, I think it's closed now. That well happened to be right across the street from it. And so, we speculate that there was some cross-contamination between the county facility and our well, so we went ahead and abandoned that well, because it was not in a good location.
I'm sorry I asked that question. It's pretty nasty.
Yes, sir.
For sure. You said something, and I just want you to reemphasize exactly what happened. First of all, you're saying twenty years ago was the first time that was recollected that it happened, so here now, twenty years, today, we, we had the problem. So, the difference is, or I should say, what should make every citizen feel good is that we test our water, even the raw material, before we do our service to it. There is no water, raw water going to any individual in the city, correct?
That's correct.
Because we, we need to make that real clear. All the water that is being serviced for our citizens is certainly going through our system, and then on the other side is clean water. And only reason why we did the boil water alert is because, and you, you actually said it correctly, it's really those who are vulnerable, if you will.
Yes, sir.
Healthy people, even if there was a trace or anything, there probably wouldn't be any problem. But the whole idea is, there wasn't any contaminated water going to, through our system to the, the, the public. It was just out of the abundance of caution, and because the EPA actually said we had to do this, this is why we did it.
That's correct. It's state statute as well.
Okay. Well, I appreciate what you did, but of course, it scared a lot of people, especially anytime, I mean, this was total city boil water alert, but it really wasn't, I said to you, I didn't think it was necessary, but it is required for us to do it. It wasn't necessary, in my mind, being an engineer, because I knew that the water was clean. It was just, in any manufacturing, you get your, you get your raw material, it just happened to be water, and we take it through our plant to make sure we produce what we want for the public, which is clean water without E. coli.
Yes.
And that's exactly what happened. But the EPA says, you gotta, you gotta boil your water anyhow, just to make sure there's no, no problem at all.
Yes, sir.
So, I appreciate what you did. But we did learn some things that we need to do, and I think communication is probably the number one thing. There were people who did not get it. I didn't get it on my phone, some got it on, on my cell phone, some got it in their house phone, and a lot of us don't use their house phone anymore, like me, but that's how I, I got it. So, I, I just appreciate, you know, the heads up and the caution to protect our citizens. So, I appreciate it for sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That may have been clarified already, but, and you and I talked at length, one reason I'm asking a lot of questions unless it doesn't come up. But when we do a reverse nine-one-one, EOC does a reverse nine-one-one, we, those go to landlines and cell phones?
Yes, sir.
And now that we have all discovered that we don't have everybody, there is a way, and I think you may have already talked about that, and you may, if you haven't, to sign up for that. I'll be honest with you, as, as I spoke with City Manager about that, and I didn't get one, I didn't get a reverse nine-one-one on either my landline or my cell phone, there is a way to sign up, and we are, we can do that, get that on our website?
Yes, sir. It's being posted right now. It'll be up in the morning, the procedures, the processes to go to Alert Brevard, and it's a simple procedure where you agree to provide information and contact information that you would like to have, and the events that you would like to have. It gives you a list of events, such as, you know, tornadoes, hurricanes, bad weather, wind advisories, that's, and water utilities.
All right, very good. We just, and I know we are, but we need to make sure we get that out there the best we can. Communication is obviously the hardest thing. Even right now, you guys all get it, you just heard it, that's about forty. And now, we've got forty-six thousand, six hundred more to figure out. So, we, and I know we're doing our best, but the communication, the other concern that I heard many times was, we, you know, why did it take two days to get that out? I think you've explained that with the forty-eight hour test, et cetera. Outside of that, I too want to thank you for not only being here to present and make it very clear, because I know that as a mayor, I, I requested that we have a report for the citizens and for ourselves, but also, the amount of emergency work you and your staff are doing to get this thing done, because I know I was on the phone with City Manager a good part of the night, and you were very, very busy, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
That was what we call code red.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes, Sean, for my clarification and a greater understanding, you said that the water, the sample is taken as it exited the raw water coming out of the ground, is that correct?
That, that is, that is the area that it is from. The, the actual locations are on the pipes that collect or funnel the water from the various wells in each of the three wellfields to the plant. So, but yes, it is, it is, when it reaches above ground, we take it from a combined point.
Okay. Now, after the test was positive for a, a E. coli, is it tested again before it enters the purification system?
No, it is tested after it leaves the purification system.
Okay. And how do we know that, other than the exit water, and it's been going through a process, how do we know that none of the purification system, it has any type of contamination other than the water exiting it?
So, we, we test at the customers' houses, basically. We have sixty-three sites throughout the city that we test monthly. And so, we do that where we test at specific addresses, because we not only want to monitor what's coming out of the plant, but we also want to monitor what's going on in the distribution system itself, because we have a lot of pipelines, a couple hundred miles worth of water pipe, and so, there are things that can happen along that traverse before it reaches the customer's home. So, it's always best to look at it at the end, because that's where the quality has diminished the most, and that's where will be your early warning, or sort of your canary in the coal mine of reduced quality.
And that's basically the same principle when you, when someone asks, how do we purge our system, when you said, take the, the most distant faucet from the street and bleed it there? That's the same principle, is it not?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, that's all I needed to know.
Yes, sir.
So, the E. coli was in the raw material, the raw water?
That is correct.
And we contest the water coming out of the plant, and there was never any issue with that water?
That is correct.
But that didn't matter, we, we don't make that decision, the EPA decides if you have E. coli coming out of your raw, raw water, you have to shut down.
That, that is.
Or boil water.
You have to boil it, that is correct. Yes, and that, that is the part of the abundance of caution.
And as my grandma always said, it's better to be safe than sorry.
Yes, sir.
I will go with that. I will also say, though, that if we absolutely know that there's no bad water out there, and we're all boiling good water, and we're, and, and, and again, I don't want to come across that I'm not on the side of safety, but boy, Saturday night in Titusville, and there's no, you know, you can't go to Sunny's? That's a big deal. And, and again, I definitely go with the flow, be safe, I get that, but it is a little frustrating if, in fact, the water was perfectly normal coming out of the faucet, and we had to shut businesses down.
And I understand that, and I apologize for any inconvenience, but I would certainly rather make people upset about being overly protective than being underprotective.
Absolutely. Totally agree with that. I, I, right hand, left hand, put them both up. I, grandma was right, be safe than sorry. But boy, that's frustrating. If we know the water's good, I'll go to Member Jordan and put it on him, he said he wouldn't have done it, so. All right. I see no more. Thank you for the report, thank you for your effort. City Manager, while we're on this, I also want to thank you for the constant communication with me, and the phone calls that I wouldn't let you off of, because I kept coming up with more questions that I, and wanted to know why I couldn't go to Sunny's, and, I'm kidding about that. Member Jordan? I'm kidding about that. I had him confused, though, he thought he had his, but, all right, again, thank you very much. City Manager.
Yes, sir. We have no board and commissions this evening. Your next gen item is petitions and requests to the public.
Petitions or requests from the public? Come on up, Mr. Johnston.
Stan Johnston, maybe I made a fool of myself at the last meeting, because I said the city, City Titusville doesn't treat its water and so forth like that. And Mr. Stoffer says, well, by God, we treat all of our water. And here's what's going on, is that Mr. Jordan said to Mr. Stoffer, just, just a minute ago, he said, because of the EPA statutes, that's why we had the boil water alert, and Mr. Stoffer said, yes, indeed. So, I want to know the statute, because when I read the statute that was written on the reports that we have, EPA groundwater statute, no, EPA groundwater rule, that is a situation in which you have untreated water from well going into a system that also has treated water. So, I talked to Mr. Stoffer about that before the meeting, and he said, there is another groundwater rule, statute, that says that you must also have a boil water alert in the case that we just had here in the city. I do not find it anywhere, I would like him to quote it. Now, that's one thing I'd like. The second thing I want to bring out is that, is that what happens is that this, Water Resources doesn't return my calls, you know, you get a phone number and so forth like that, they don't return my calls, they don't respond to my emails, I'm a registered engineer, and they have gag orders on a number of people, like, for example, the lab technician and so forth. I can't talk to the lab technician, because there's gag orders. Not only that, is I got a trespass warning against me, that I'm not allowed to go to the Garden Street office, because I brought my car there that had sewage on it, and I asked someone to come, to look at the sewage, so what did they do? Of course, they called nine-one-one and called the police to have me removed, which is still current today, I have a trespass warrant. So, I want you to understand, is that with Water Resources, I do not have a good relationship. I would like to know also about this statute that Mr. Mr. Stoffer claims exists, which I haven't found. Okay? So, that's the main thing, because it appears that maybe, maybe all this boil water alert was a false alarm. And, and this thing about abundance and caution and so forth, it may have just been a false alarm, and I would like to look into it, and I would like Mr. Stoffer to answer that, as what, where is this statute that he's talking about, that, that was required, this boil water alert that Mr. Jordan referred to? EPA groundwater rule?
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Thank you.
Be nice for him to do it.
No, not at this time, thank you. City Manager?
Still petitions and requests, sir?
Anybody else, petitions or requests? Come on up. Thank you, sir.
Hello, folks. Welcome to the board. This is the first time I've been here since you guys had your changeover.
Thank you, I hope it's an improvement.
Well, we'll see. I got my eye on all of you up here, all right? You aren't here last to most here, so, I'm gonna say something tonight that doesn't apply to you, so, just ignore it, all right?
He got that pass again.
The first thing is, and you, and I apologize for not talking to City Manager about this before I showed up here and bushwhacked him, but...
Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Joe Hill. I live at forty-four ninety Brownie Avenue here in Titusville.
You're good.
So, the first thing is, the intersection at Harrison and Hopkins. The pedestrian lights there let you go walk, or wait, or whatever, they've been inoperative for over a year there. And I saw some poor guy there, he, he, he's not handicapped, but he's just kind of, you know, and he was just waiting to try to get across there, and those lights weren't working, he was looking around, whatnot, and I just thought, I'm just bringing it up, because it's been a long time, maybe y'all need to look at it. The other thing is, and this is where I didn't say this applied to you, I showed up here a few months back, and I brought... a few months back, and I brought up a concern I had about the condition of the sidewalk, and say bicycle access from Titus Landing up past the high school, because I've seen, I know some parents, they will not let their kids walk to school, they're just too dangerous, they won't let them ride their bicycles, too dangerous, and I brought this up a few months ago, and I challenge you guys, the ones that are still here, to walk it, to walk from Titus Landing Mall up to the courthouse, and I just want to know, did any of you guys take me up on it? Did any of you guys walk it?
Not the whole walk, that's a long way.
I know it is.
To Titusville High School, yeah.
But you see what I'm talking about.
Well, yeah, yeah, and I.
You imagine somebody in a wheelchair trying to get down through there? There's places through there, you know, and once you get on the other side of Sycamore, there's no sidewalks at all.
Absolutely.
And then you guys, I mean, and I think there's going to be some money coming in with everything that's going on with the government right now, why don't you do something about that, please? I see bicycles up there early in the morning when it's still dark, and cars trying to get around them, and you see people going the wrong way on the road on a bicycle, they think that's safe, but if somebody else is coming the other way, what are you going to do, you got to stop.
Yep, you're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want Kevin or something, I'd kind of like to get a response to that, because I remember the question he had on that, and I go back to my facility AP days at Titusville High School, and there was a concern we brought up, and if I'm not mistaken, that's, I'll let Kevin answer that, is that ours to deal with, or is that F dot, or how's that work?
Well, Hopkins is a city street, so, the, we have a consultant coming in that's working on a collector sidewalk infill plan, it was approved a couple months ago, they're working on it for all the collectors and arterials, using impac fees, and then we'll come back with some priorities within that, I can't say that Hopkins will be the highest priority, because we haven't seen the plan yet, I would tell you, because we worked on Hopkins, the challenge at Hopkins is, the rightway is already full with the road, you need ten feet to put a sidewalk in, offset from an uncurbed roadway, if you put curbs on the road, you trigger stormwater, which means we would be buying property, so there's a lot in Hopkins itself, because it is an older, especially in that area, where it goes to two lane, is an older area, so there are a lot of challenges, roadside swells, the businesses don't have drainage infrastructure, so they get a lot of water in front of their business right now, that's got to go somewhere if we add an improvement, so, there's a lot of challenges in that area, but we do have Kimberly Horn on board, who's looking at all our collectors to infill every gap we have, to come back with a program we allocated at the eight hundred thousand dollars of impac fees to fill in these gaps in sidewalks, so that's the primary avenue that we'd look at for.
So I'm glad I ask, because, I ask you to explain it, because there is always more to it than we know, and, so getting a sidewalk north of Sycamore, what you just stated would be a big issue.
Yeah, the city owns a property there, so there's some mitigating that we can do for one section, but once we get to the businesses, we actually did a plan in one town to put the sidewalk in, the businesses that all basically have one continuous driveway through there, we'd have to put a sidewalk in and figure out a way to move that water off of those driveways and make, because you don't want water sitting on a sidewalk that leaves them to be slippery and trip hazards, so there's a lot, there were a lot of challenges in making that connection, which is why we're going to have this consultant come back and try to mitigate some of that, there are pieces of sidewalks installed on one side, where the, the car dealership had made improvements, Roger Bayview have improvements, but it's not a continuous, so we're hoping to fill all those gaps in, it's going to be a long process, in which we'll come back with other streets like Park Avenue, Harrison Street, that also have gaps that need infill as well.
And do we have a plan for some sidewalk repair, perhaps in that area and other places, but certainly along Hopkins there, that's, you know, we have an awful lot of high school kids that do walk to school along that sidewalk, is there a plan to work on, at least take a look at it and see where there are sections that need help?
Yeah, we'll go work water into the streets, go look at it again.
Okay, what about the light on Harrison, is that a F dot thing?
No, that's ours, the damage is underground, which involved digging the road up, but we're also in the process of replacing the entire intersection's traffic signal, so our facility staff has taken it out of service and waiting for the new mast arms to come up, which will replace the entire infrastructure related to the traffic signal, so the choice is made that instead digging the road up to make the repair, to get the headlight in service for a short period of time, and we're hoping the signals will be completely replaced, so that's what that one is, it was just a choice made to delay that repair, waiting on the full rebuild.
Probably a good choice, I appreciate that.
And the polls have taken a considerable amount of time to, because of obvious COVID and, to get, they're taking a lot more time.
Thank you, good answers, I appreciate that, I feel like I'm more well-informed on that.
Thank you.
I appreciate, thank you. Petitions or requests continued? Nobody else, city manager?
Mayor and council, we're on consent agenda items A through F right now, council, are there any questions that you have for staff on any of the consent agenda items? Council, do you desire to pull any of the consent agenda items?
No.
Clerk, do you have any cards for consent?
Yes, sir, we have one individual that has signed up on six items.
Mayor and council, I'd like to read for the record the titles for consent A through F. Consent agenda item 8A, approve change order two to work order number three to the contract for annual stormwater piping and installation. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the award of solid waste routing software and implementation services, and additionally approve the associated budget amendment in the amount of seventy-five thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars for the implementation. Consent agenda item 8C, approve resolution twenty-five twenty-two-one approving temporary road closures of state roads for special events, farmer's market, and downtown street parties. Consent agenda item 8D, approve change order number one with Wharton Smith Incorporated for the city of Titusville building permit fees. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the award of the contract for the Julia Street lighting project. Consent agenda item 8F, adopt resolution twenty-six twenty-two-one, the Kirk Uckman Memorial Trail.
Thank you, sir, council, anything you want to add to that at this time?
Sorry.
Member Stokel.
I did have a question, I was wondering, I think it might be Kevin, I'm just curious about what they're doing with the, if he can explain a little bit about the country club drive, what they're doing there with the piping, just because I know that place typically does flood, especially during hurricanes, low elevation, I just wanted a little bit of explanation on what you guys are doing exactly.
Yeah, so the inlet right there in front of the clubhouse does flood, backs up regularly, so we're installing, or in the process of installing, a second inlet and underground retention system that will alleviate the recurring flooding, won't help with a hurricane, too much, too much water coming through with a hurricane, but it will take away the afternoon rainstorm backups that happen, so we modified the original plan, adding a second inlet and a second retention area underground, they've been working on the first side, we added a second side to bring up the storage capacity.
Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Set the clock, please.
Yeah, you just end it, Hudson.
Ready, ready.
Okay, here we go, ready, Stan Johnston, professional engineer, city here, lived in here in about fifty, about fifty years, so, consent item 8A, approval. 8B, opposed. 8C, approved. 8D, skip. 8E, approved. 8F, approved. So, I've included this handout for this discussion, and what we just had was an example of what's going on with solid waste routing software and implementation services, well, I have opposition to Water Resources being awarded this, why would I have opposition? Water Resources can't, don't even know how to use their phone, they don't know how to use their email. I don't get responses for the past eight months, emails, phone calls, and when I go there, I get the police call on me, so why in the world are we going to give them some expensive software they can't seem to communicate on just regular things, like on the phone? Like we just had just now, is that we had Mr. Stauffer claim that there is an EPA rule that would give him justification for a boiled water alert. Of course, I've sent him an email about all this and so forth, and asked for, and had phone calls into Water Resources, and this hadn't been discussed yet, but I've tried, and so I made a fool of myself at the CRA meeting, saying that water's not treated, because the EPA rule that I read says that you, the city of Titusville would not have all their water treated, according to that rule, so I'm looking forward to some things, some communication, in other words, we got a software implementation of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and they can't seem to, and let me give you another example, I was complaining, you remember this, that the water towers were coming down, remember that, remember that? And I was told, and you were told that there was calculations and so forth, the city had calculations for that, remember that? Yeah, in other words, the city calculated, had calculations for both these water towers that they need to come, they can come down without any repercussions to our system. Well, I kept asking for these calculations, and I got something for the South Water Tower, but the one on South Street, I would have to pay several thousand dollars, because the calculations were never done, that's what I've got, let me say again, is that Mr. Stauffer told you guys that he had calculations and so forth, that the water tower on South Street was justified to remove that water tower, however, I finally got emails saying I'm going to spend several thousand dollars if I want to get those, see those calculations, because they haven't been done. And when I talk about, right now, is there's closed doors, there's gag orders, what's a gag order, like, for example, I call for the laboratory assistant, I've been, done that a number of times, calling for the lab, lab, and so forth, and I just leave messages, never return my call, I, there's a lab assistant that I went, I was approached on Sandpoint Park, when we were having this sewage thing, walk away from me, I tried to take photos of pictures of people who are working on this, of city of Titusville, no, no, they put their hand away and they run away from me, put their hand over their face, there's gag orders, there's closed doors, this, what I'm saying, sharing with you tonight, is that on this particular item, is that we have, on Water Resources, we have a dysfunctional portion of our city government, dysfunctional, it doesn't respond to the public, doesn't respond to me, I'm a registered civil engineer, I'd like to know what's going on, Mr. Stauffer has lied to me repeatedly about other things, for example, the dam at the senior center, he knows about that, and that was done in two thousand twelve, so when I go, when I complain to the city of Titusville about Mr. Stauffer's behavior, I write, I write pages and pages of it, and so I take it to what, to human resources, and what do they do? They throw it in a wastebasket, as directed by city manager, are we making progress? I'd like to know how we're making progress on this issue of gag orders, closed doors, and so forth like that, I would also like to know, like I said, I'd like to know this EPA rule that justified our boiled water alert, so we have other things, so, for example, you see the poster down here, as far as Water Resources, you think Water Resources responded to that? In other words, I call, other people call, and they ask for this, for the city of Titusville to turn off the water, they don't do it, they don't do it, other people, I even came to the council meeting and asked to do it, I put it in writing, turn off the fountains, no, but we continue to spray, so when I go to, for example, when I go to a parish hospital and complain about it, they don't want to talk about it, they don't want to talk about it at all, and you guys don't want to talk about it either, the newspaper doesn't want to talk about it, neither does FDEP.
Stop clock.
Okay, this has to do with.
I'm trying, I'm trying to hear what you, if, that's what you signed up for.
Yes, sir.
I want to know what you feel, and you had two, you opposed, I thought.
Okay.
I wanted to know what you felt about the routing software, and why you didn't like it, or did like it, or whatever, and now we're all over the place, so come back, come back to me, start the clock.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Listen, Mr. Diesel, is that we're talking about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and additionally approve additional, it says approve associated budget amendment in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, and I can't even get him to answer a phone call, that's pretty bad, in other words, we're going to, we're going to give him all this software and so forth, and he's also reported to you about calculations he has done on the stormwater system.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
That, Mr. Stauffer has nothing to do with this agenda item, this is solid waste.
Okay, and the gray area, I was dealing with the water and that gray, so let's, let's go to your second one.
Oh, you know what, I think he's right, it's solid waste, isn't it? I thought this was Mr. Stauffer's, am I, am I wrong?
Thank you.
Is this solid waste? This is Mr. Cook.
Sir, you'll have to talk to the board.
Yeah, over here.
I think I'm wrong.
It's twice.
That's not funny.
It's twice in one night.
That's not funny, okay, listen, if this is solid waste, which it says it is, I read it, I read it as, that it was wastewater, because I, there was, I thought there was another one, so, I'm wrong with that, I'm going to, I can change it from opposed to that to neither, I did not know, I made all this noise here, and I was off track, I made another mistake, I'm sorry, so I'll sit down, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, any, any other cards?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking for member Jordan, member Jordan?
Yeah, I move that we approve, because then agenda items 8A through 8F.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, vice mayor seconds, roll call, vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yeah, passes, passes unanimously.
On to item nine A, which is ordinance seventeen twenty-two-one, and the city attorney will read the ordinance, and I'll introduce the item.
Ordinance number seventeen twenty-two-one, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending chapter fifteen pensions and retirement, article three, police officers and firefighters' pension plan of the code of ordinances of the city of Titusville, amending division five, section fifteen dash two twenty-two, benefits effective June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, and division five, section fifteen dash two thirty-seven, supplemental benefit component for special benefits, chapters one seventy-five and one eighty-five share accounts, providing for separability, refill of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The following proposed ordinance, underlying corrections are made for the firefighters' education incentive pay, and types of incentive pays for members of the union, which are currently stated in the IAF collective bargaining agreement language, article twenty-two incentive pay. The aforementioned pay incentives currently count as pensionable earnings, these revisions do not constitute additional cost to the city to list these incentives in a revised pension ordinance. In addition, this ordinance establishes a supplemental benefit component referred to as the share plan, providing for a special benefit for firefighters to be funded solely by the Florida statute one seventy-five premium pay monies. The components of the share plan referred to in this ordinance were negotiated and have been mutually agreed upon by the city and the IAF, accordance with Florida statute one seventy-five point three five one, and article four point eight of the collective bargaining agreement. The CBA between the IFF and the city of Titusville was approved by city council on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, and added post-agenda publishing is a foster and foster hard copy actuarial report from our consultants, that again, reiterates that there's no cost to the city for this.
Okay, very good, any staff report, nothing there, member Robinson?
Yes, just, city manager, just for the education of all, I already know the answer, we and I already discussed this, that this is relating to justify department and not the police department.
That's correct.
Any other counsel? Cards, please.
Stan Johnston.
Thank you, sir, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move there.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 17, 2021.
I have a motion from Member Jordan.
Second.
I have a second from Member Stokel. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We move to B.
9B is ordinance 18, 2021 relating to the review of lot splits and flag lot approvals. The city attorney will read the ordinance, and I will introduce.
Ordinance number 18, 2021, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the land development regulations to delete provisions related to lot splits and amend provisions related to flag lots by amending Chapter 30 Development Standards, specifically amending Sections 30-140 Flag Lots and 30-237 Public Streets and Private Roads and Subdivisions, Chapter 34 Procedures, specifically renaming Article 3 subdivisions, Division 2 Lot Split, renaming and amending Sections 34-113 Lot Split Qualifications, deleting Sections 34, 111 and 10, 34-112 Application and 34-114 Approval, amending Chapter 34 Procedures by amending Sections 34-126 and 10, 34-143 Small Scale Plaque Qualifications, and 34-214 Application Classifications and Review Schedules, amending Chapter 37 Definitions by amending Section 37-1 Definitions and amending Development Review Procedures Technical Manual by deleting Section 8 Lot Split, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This ordinance was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their July 21, 2021 meeting, recommending approval 5 to. The two members that did not vote in favor of this proposal said the ordinance change did not resolve the problem. At the request of a citizen, the Titusville City Council approved advisability for staff to review city's land development regulations relating to lot split approval. Lot split process is review and approval of two creation, of the creation of two lots from one lot of an existing lot to ensure that both new lots meet the requirements of the code. Pursuant to Florida statutes, the creation of three or more lots is a subdivision, and the code contains requirements for these situations. Staff is not recommending removal of the current lot split process because there's no mechanism. The staff is recommending approval of lot split process because there is no mechanism to ensure that lot splits are reviewed by the city prior to recording of the deeds by the city clerk's office. Generally, staff becomes aware of the lot split when a development permit is requested for the subject partial and works with the owner to address any issues that may arise. The existence of current code has, in some cases, hindered permitting of proposed development by requiring two property owners to go through the lot split process after the fact. Flag lot requirements are not being changed, although reference to flag lots are being amended as the code currently references flag lots in the lot split provisions. Mr. Busaka is available to answer questions that council may have on the second reading final public hearing.
Ms. Busaka, anything?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, Member Stokel.
It looks like we just got a change.
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot about that part.
Thanks.
This is part of the effective date, and it states that any lots created by meets and bounds, which meet all the requirements of the code, shall be entitled to the provisions of this ordinance. This allows lots that were created prior to this ordinance, which are legal to be developed and not, and make sure that they don't have to go through this lot split requirement that we're hoping will be deleted. Thank you for asking.
Anything else from council? Any questions? Cards, please.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, and I'm looking at this ordinance, 860 Point Set Avenue, and it has provisions for flag lots, and the flag is a minimum width, and I'm asking someone to correct me, playing to correct me, a minimum width of 25 foot. 25 foot for a flag.
That's the stem, not the lot itself.
That's the stem, exactly. 25 foot for the stem. And we had a blow up at the last council member meeting, if you remember, and then I called some things stupid, 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 if you remember that. I think you remember it. I even called the lady up and I apologized to her because I understand her and I scared her. But you look at that scut platform, Elizabeth Oaks Town Homes, it shows replacement with a, an access, drivable access of only about eight feet, 10 feet wide, and that's it. That's it. I mean, in other words, landscape and so forth prevents, prevents two-way going on this particular Morningside Lane that is now, people can, for the most part, drive both ways or pull off to the side. So consider what's going on here to be consistent when you review this other, this plant, Elizabeth Oaks Town Home, because there ain't no 25-foot stem for these lots at all, nothing at all. There's no, in other words, these lots are supposed to be serviced by fire and garbage and so forth like that. I don't know how you're going to negotiate traffic on something like that. So that's all I have to add on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards? Member Jordan?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 18, 2021.
Second.
Motion from Member Jordan, second by vice mayor. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. City manager.
On to 9C, which is ordinance 19, 2021 relating to floodplain regulations.
Ordinance number 19, 2021, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending floodplain management standards to be consistent with federal emergency management requirements by amending Chapter 30 Development Standards, specifically amending Sections 30-92 applicability, C, basis for establishing flood hazard areas, 30-100 definitions, and 30-104 manufactured homes, D, elevation, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance during their meeting on July 21, 2021, and recommended approval 7-0. Based on policy changes issued by FEMA, staff is proposing the following amendments to the floodplain management regulations. It adopts the most current floodplain insurance study for Brevard County and incorporates areas dated January 29, 2021 as adopted by Brevard County. It removes the definitions of existing manufactured home, park, or subdivision, expansion to existing manufactured home, park, or subdivision, and new manufactured homes, park, or subdivision. It amends the standard for manufactured homes to require that all manufactured homes are placed, replaced, placed or replaced, or substantially improved in the flood hazard areas, de-elevated such that the bottom of the frame is at or above the elevation required by the Florida Building Code. This ordinance has been reviewed by the Florida Division of Emergency Management, and they recommended approval. Mr. Steve Adams, our building official, is here to answer questions that you may have.
Mr. Adams, any words you want to give us first?
Sure, thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions. If I may, I'll just give some brief facts about our floodplain regulations and what they are and why they're important. As some may or may not know, in order for property owners to have access to flood insurance, the community must participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. The city of Titusville has done so. The very first requirement in order to participate in that program is the community must adopt its own floodplain regulations, which is what we have here. The city does go above and beyond simple participation in that we also participate in the community rating system, which is extra effort in order to realize benefits of reduced premiums for policyholders in the community. I'm very happy to say that in the recent years, our CRS rating has improved, so now our policyholders in the city of Titusville are subject to a 15% reduction in premium costs for those that are associated with a special flood hazard area, and those who are not in a special flood hazard area who choose to buy additional flood insurance are subject to an additional 5% reduction in premium costs. The efforts that are being made here are, in order to, the intent is to stay consistent with the model floodplain ordinance provided by FEMA. That's why we have these amendments associated with mobile homes and also galvanizing and implementing the recent letter of map changes over the past several years that have been submitted. They've been reviewed and approved by FEMA and now are associated with the panels on the firm insurance rate map. So these efforts are specifically to try to realize the greatest potential for reduction in premiums for our policyholders and residents of Titusville.
Okay, thank you very much. We have any questions on that? First of all, I think it was well explained and simplified, because that's kind of what we need to hear here.
Yes, sir.
That being said, any cards?
One card, Stan Johnston.
You ready for this? Good evening, Stan Johnston again. I don't blame her for leaving. Most people heard most of it. Okay, I'm opposed to this. Why am I opposed to this? I'm opposed to this because the city has been giving false information to FEMA again and again. False information, and I have proof of that. The proof is LOMAR dated 2016. What happened, and I'll tell you what, it's detailed on this sheet that I gave you. It's detailed, number five, it says 1985 to present, and it's erroneous flood zones and other cities deceptive projects. Over 36 years of uncorrected erroneous floodplanes disputed in 1985 by city's freshwater management study, yet unfairly and illegally concealed from the public and FEMA by the city of Titusville. In 2016, so here's the proof, in 2016, Alomar removed about 80% of homes from the firm map of Baker subdivision, I think, thus releasing some of city's victims and exposing only a part, only a part of city's fraud and deception. I'm talking about Mr. Stauffer also on this. Parkland Estates, Bay Meadows subdivision, and the homes along War Eagles Boulevard still remain in flood zones not corrected by city's deliberate and unfair failure to notify public and FEMA of known disputes, errors of city's firm maps. In other words, the false information that city has given to FEMA saying is, hey, we have no idea, we don't have any information on errors in the flood zone, but we do. The 1985 freshwater management study. But we don't report to FEMA. FEMA won't listen to me, and city won't listen to me either, so when I complain about it, what happens is, I complained about Mr. Stauffer, and you heard what happened, is they took the information and they threw it in the wastebasket. So we go on. More deception, more dishonesty, more nonsense. And we got proof. I said we got proof, that 2016 LOMAR proves it. Took almost all the homes out. I was going to also mention about Mr. Parrish and Mr. Galindo, who took information, I gave them information, and they didn't put it in the resilient Titusville report. That's also deception and so forth. And so, in other words, right now, it's that the city of Titusville's claimed to be resilient, or it's not resilient because we're not maintaining these floodways outside of city limits towards the St. Johns River between Fox Lake Road and State Road 50.
Thank you.
May I have two more minutes?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Is there, we're mad here. Anything else from council? Any other cards? Member Jordan?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 19, 2021.
I have a motion from Mr. Jordan, a second from vice mayor. Roll call, vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We move on to a first reading. There'll be no motion or vote.
Item 9D, this is the ordinance 21, 2021, Community Gardens. The city attorney will read the proposed ordinance.
Ordinance number 21, 2021, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances to allow community gardens as a permitted use in the public P zoning district and a limited use in neighborhood commercial NC, general use GU, downtown mixed use DMU, and regional mixed use RMU zoning districts, and to expand the limitation standards by amending Chapter 28 zoning, specifically amending Sections 28-54 Use Table and 28-271 Community Gardens, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
This is the first reading and first public hearing of ordinance 20, 2021. The second reading is scheduled for your August 24, 2021, meeting at 6:30. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance at their August 4 meeting and recommended approval with an amendment to remove the screening requirements, and the vote was 7-0. Ms. Busaka is available to answer questions that you have on this first reading.
Ms. Busaka, you want to do any, explain that a little clearer, or I know it was quite a task given to you.
Well, the current ordinance that governs community gardens does not have a screening requirement. However, when advisability was given by this council, there was some concerns that the community garden would not be visible from an arterial roadway. So there is language in here that says a community garden shall be screened so that it is not visible from an arterial roadway. That's the language that the Planning and Zoning Commission would recommend it be removed. The concerns that I heard were everything from, we would rather see a community garden than a cheap plastic fence, to, we don't think it's necessary, so, but that was, and it was explained to the P&amp;Z that it was based on comments from the council, but they wanted you to understand their concerns.
Okay, Member Stokel.
So to clarify, they want to remove the requirement for the screening?
Correct. It is not currently in the code, it is a new provision.
And what's the reasoning behind potentially leaving it in there?
Well, the reason was the concerns expressed by this council that they did not want to drive down, I believe the issue was driving down Hopkins and looking over and necessarily seeing these raised wooden beds with flowers or vegetables or whatever was in there that they would prefer, you would prefer to have some kind of screening.
So if we feel that we want to see a screen versus that, leave it in there?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then, thank you for the quick turnaround time on this.
My pleasure.
Any other council comments? I would reiterate again, I know that when we discussed this, it was like playing ping pong, they kept coming back and coming back, and this idea and that idea, and I appreciate you coming back with something so clear. Cards, please?
No cards.
No cards, no motion or vote required. We can move on to the next one. City manager?
Yes, sir, we're entering our quasi judicial section of the meeting, so the city attorney will read quasi judicial procedures.
Thank you.
During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on this quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance to the chambers. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council, sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. Staff and applicant, of all witnesses that intend to speak, sign an oath card. If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, of all agenda items been properly advertised. In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding this item, said visitor opinions shall be disclosed.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this item at their August 4 meeting and recommended approval 7-0. The Community Redevelopment Agency considered this item this evening. The Community Redevelopment Agency considered this item this evening and recommended approval 7-0. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to locate a rental car agency at 1026 South Hopkins Avenue. The applicant is proposing to lease the front 1.1 acre portion of the partial to operate rental car agency. The property is owned downtown mixed use, midtown subdistrict. Section 28107A of the Land Development Regulation requires that rental car agencies obtain a conditional use permit approval in the midtown subdistrict of the DMU zoning district. Property has been used as a new slash used car sales since the 1960s. Per the submitted plan, the applicant proposes to utilize the existing building, parking, ingress egress points for vehicular access. And Ms. Busaka is here to answer any questions that you may have on this item.
I would, real quick, before you even do that, I'll, I'll play, and I think that we saw the cards at the CRA, but I'll play the card earlier that I can't think of a better situation than this rental car business going to this former automotive sales place. We certainly hope they can keep the Jetsons roof, but if not, I'm sure it'll be fine. But even after we discussed this in my agenda prep meeting, I drove by and just said there couldn't be a more perfect setup. So with that, I'm, I'm pretty ready to go. Ms. Busaka.
I just wanted to mention that, that you do have a staff report, that the staff has reviewed this and found that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the locational requirements, as well as the conditional use permit standards, and that we recommend approval.
Very good. Counsel, do you have anything else or anything you want to add without that? Applicant? The applicant is here, I'm sure. If there's anything you want to add?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any cards?
No additional cards.
No additional cards. I'm looking for a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve conditional use permit 4-2021.
I have the motion.
Second.
I have the motion from Member Jordan. I have the second from Vice Mayor. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
And Mayor, we are now to 10B, which is ordinance 202021, the tree protection ordinance. City attorney will read and I will introduce.
Ordinance number 202021, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the land development regulations to provide for standards of tree protection, including the designation of protected trees, creation of total canopy and preserved canopy requirements, standards for removal of heritage trees, establishment of incentives to preserve trees and reduce mitigation, and amending critical root zone, tree survey, and buffer yard requirements, by amending chapter 30 development standards, specifically amending sections 30-31 intent, 30-32 criteria for removal, 30-33 relocation or replacement of trees, 30-34 mitigation plan, 30-35 exceptions, 30-39 tree removal permit required, 30-40 tree survey required before permit, 30-324 landscape, 30-334 reduction in required landscape yards, and 30-338 natural buffer yards, and creating new section 30-31.5 canopy requirements, providing for grandfather provision, separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading of this ordinance. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled to be conducted before city council's meeting on August 24, 2021 at 6:30. The Titusville Environmental Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission have recommended the tree protection ordinances, which are included in your agenda packet. And Ms. Busaka, I believe you have a presentation that you'd like to provide.
I do. You're going to, I haven't read everyone's speech this evening, but I have a feeling that you're going to hear a lot of specifics. So I'd like to start the evening out looking at the big picture. We currently have an approach in our landscape code that talks about preservation of 10% in residential, mitigation of trees that are being removed, and that size is 20 inches and up, and a landscape requirement. That's what this says. Two to one mitigation for specimen trees and trees in excess of 20 inches are considered specimen trees. Tonight, I think that we need to think about what is it that you want to do? And I think the fundamental questions are, do you intend that we now have a minimum preservation requirement? Right now, that minimum preservation requirement is only for residential and it's subdivisions and it's 10%. It's not specifically trees, it's vegetation. The second thing that, so if you're going to have canopy requirements, which would be a new requirement, what are the minimum requirements that you want? You have discussed in the past having exceptions for either certain sizes of commercial and industrial, or some people have even said all commercial and industrial. So I think that's an important point. And finally, there's going to be probably some discussion about what to do with forested wetlands. If you plan to have a canopy, a minimum canopy standard, then there has been a great debate as to whether or not forested wetlands should be allowed in that preservation. Some people believe that they're already required to be preserved, so they shouldn't count twice. Others believe that they could be mitigated with, through the proper process, so you should get some credit for forested wetlands. There's another way to go about canopy, or another way to go about preservation standards, and that is instead of looking at canopy, you could look at protected trees. There are communities that say things like, you have to maintain 30% of all of the protected trees, and then they give you a minimum size on your site. So that's different than canopy, which is looking at a tree based on a coverage of the leafy part of the tree, or to say, we have certain trees that are so important to us that we want you to maintain a specific size. So if you want to go forward with mandatory preservation, the ordinance has currently written, talks about canopy, but there is another option. There's lots more options, but those are probably the large, big two. And then, if you're going to have, pardon me?
That's beautiful.
Thank you. If you're going to have, if you're going to have a mitigation, if you're going to have a mandatory requirement, then that requires that you have mitigation. Because if you take something that's mandatory out, you have to have a reason to do that. So if you're going to have mitigation, the question is, what are the mitigation requirements? If you have some, I've heard people here say they would like to see incentives. The only way incentives work is if you have some mandatory requirement. There's no point, there's no way you can make an incentive work, I mean, there's no point in having the carrot if you don't have the stick. So that's another option. And finally, once you've given mandatory requirements or set any standards at all, there's the waiver and appeals process. So that process has to be considered. You've had, you have three, you have a lot of ordinances that you've seen, but there are three that come from different groups. One is the TEC. And what the TEC has recommended is a 37 and a half percent canopy and a substantial mitigation. So that has, in the level of impacts, the TEC is going to preserve the most trees and have the most impact to the property owner. The P and Z kind of goes a little bit less than that. They do require, they do propose mandatory preservation at a lower, at a lower percentage. They do talk about some exemptions for certain sized residential and commercial, and they do have a mitigation requirement. The staff went even one a little bit lower than that with the mandatory canopy requirements and the mandatory mitigation requirements. So it's a balancing act. What you're going to be asked to do tonight is listen to a lot of specifics, but what we're going to ask you to do when you finally make a decision is balance, how much mandatory do you want? How much mitigation do you want to require? And if you have those things, what do you want to do for incentives? There's lots of fine points that we can talk about, whether the tree is going to be, the mandatory preservation is going to be a 36 inch tree, a 46 inch tree. I know that we provided, you were provided with some pictures of one subdivision, that the subdivision was constructed in the, about 1980, was planted in 1983, so it was constructed in that timeframe. And you saw that 40, 45, even 50 year old trees are, oak trees are about 36 inches. One of the things you probably hear tonight is that a 46 inch tree is 140 years old. That may be true, but I don't believe it's true of, of a southern oak. That's a Quercus virginiana. And if you go to your friendly Google and look up tree, how old is the tree based on the DBH? What you're going to get is a different species because a live oak that we see around here gets its, obtains its maximum growth maturity typically at about 70 years. It grows very quickly when it's first planted and then begins to slow down. I've done a lot of research on this, and many, many of the items that I have found from reputable scientific areas say that they're not even sure how to measure the growth of an oak because it goes so quickly in the beginning and then slows down. So it's not a linear progression, it's more of a, whatever that other number, that other thing is. I wasn't a math major. So those are the, those are the main issues that I think, we can go into a lot of detail, but it would be really helpful for staff if you would think about these big picture. What, and I'm going to go through them one more time so that you can think about this. Do you or do you not want to have mandatory preservation? If you do, do you want to do it by canopy, or do you want to do it by certain protected trees? Do you want a minimum, whatever that minimum is, do you want exceptions? For, and I, you know, I know you have maps in front of you to show you how much property is vacant on certain land uses. The maps aren't perfect, but they'll give you an idea of what's going on. If you want mitigation, what's the requirement? If you want incentives, how does that work? And what the appeals and waivers are? And it's a balancing act. Thank you.
Counsel, Vice Mayor.
So Peggy, I mean, we started out, I don't know about, I'm going to speak for everybody, but I think our idea was, you know, I look at trees like the Angel Cherie. I look at trees like the Senator, which burned down in Seminole County, and people, people make trips just to see them. And so my thought was, you know, those ought to be almost like artistic assets in the And if there was a way to preserve those kinds of trees, that we should. So when you say canopy versus preservation of certain trees, I'm sort of like, can I do a little of both?
You absolutely can, of course. Do a little of both. The, the ordinance that you have in front of you has some canopy requirements plus these heritage tree requirements to say that the way that you can remove a heritage tree is to go to the Development Review Committee, and if there's an appeal, then that would go to this council. But what, what you hear tonight, I'm sure, is, I feel a little like Perry Mason giving my opening statement. What you will hear tonight is that 46 inches is too large a heritage tree. I read many of the emails that you've received this week, and they're talking about 36 or something. So that's where the balancing comes in. If you want to say 36 inch trees are, are the trees we want to preserve, then you may want to consider backing off on the maximum canopy. That's what the county has done. They have a lesser tree requirement. Their trees, their, their, most highly protected trees are smaller, but they have less canopy requirements.
So what size per tree preservation does the county have?
They have, I have this paper here somewhere. I want to tell you that it's a good thing we don't smoke because I'd be a fire hazard. They have, right now, their canopy requirement is for single family and multifamily, residential, commercial, institutional, and public, the minimum canopy preservation is 10%. Then they have planted 10% for a total of 20%.
Okay.
And their tree is 24 inches. So you can see that they decided to back off on the minimum, on the tree size, and then put, so they have smaller trees but lesser canopy as well. And then, as I said, there is the, there are communities that simply say, count all the trees of a certain size, and you have to maintain 30% of those on site. You have to work around it. So that maintains the large tree, but not necessarily the ecosystem created by having several trees together, which is what canopy will do for you.
Yeah. I don't know if you know the answer to this, and this is just my thought. There were some people here that probably could have asked. I don't think they left. But it would seem like the, the older, larger trees, one, they're going to provide more canopy. But I would think in terms of the environmental protections, they are also more valuable.
I think that is true and to a point. And, and I think that this was made by someone on this council, the last time we talked about this. There comes a point where a tree gets old and it's not going to last forever. So if that tree is at, is a healthy tree and has another 50, 100 years, yes, I think you're right. If that tree is at the point where it's diseased or is at the end of its lifespan, then you may not get the, the quality that you want. And there's no way that you and I can know that today about any given tree that's out there. That's something that has to be looked at on a case by case basis.
Okay. So let me get you to repeat this again. The county protects trees, or what's that?
This is on page 274 of the 4,000 pages you got.
Yeah. 274?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let me go there.
And you can see that those range everywhere from Brevard County from 24 inches all the way up to Naples, Florida, with, and Ormond by the Sea at 36 inches. Also Port Orange, which is known for its trees at 40, 36 inches.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Jordan?
Thank you. First of all, I'm going to apologize because it's after 8 o'clock. My bedtime is 8 o'clock. Okay, so just want you to know that.
You told me 8:30.
I told you 8:30.
You've got 15 more minutes.
I'm getting older, so just want to remind again, when we first started this, we asked for low hanging fruit. We've gone beyond that. I remember, we started with trees, preserving the trees. We all say we want to preserve trees as much as possible, and then someone came up with canopy, which I knew nothing about. I understand it now, but I knew nothing about it. Now we are, look like we're expanding based on the rail lines, I see. We're talking about industrial and commercial areas when we were only talking about, what do you call it?
Residential.
First, so I'm not interested in commercial and industrial. I will tell you that now. That doesn't make any sense to me, and just looking at what's happening around me in the industrial area now, even though there's, there's some trees and everything, I, I looked at it and I thought to myself, man, we're going to put a big building here, and right in the middle of it may be something mandatory that we, in my mind, foolishly said we need said we needed to do. And it's preventing the developers, the business from getting a return on, on their investment. So I am really not interested in industrial and commercial. I think we should just strike that and do exactly what we said in the beginning, which we all agreed to. And that really was the, the, what was it again?
Heritage trees.
Heritage trees.
No, the development.
Oh, residential.
Residential, thank you. I told you I'm getting sleepy, so I, I don't remember. But I, I think we all want to do the right thing, but I also do have this map that you all gave us. And we've got over 3,200, actually 3,600 acres of preserved land that has a lot of trees on it, for sure. So we got to understand what our vision is for the future. We got to understand where we're trying to go and we also have to understand that we got to live. And for us to say we're going to save a tree despite what we need in the city, it makes no sense to me at all. But it does make sense that we have trees. And I think we got a lot of them for sure. The question is, what is reasonable? What can we live with as far as a council to make sure that we're promoting a great environment because we are a tree city, but also making sure that we don't push developers out and say, we're just not going to have you because, and we can't even do that because they actually own land. You know, all these developers own land and they should have a right to do what they want reasonably within the guidelines that we have. So when I look at the rail lines that we have so far, I, I'm in agreement. We, we can't go way over with what ICTEC says. I'm not even sure I like a lot of stuff that Planning and Zoning said, but I think they were, they're trying to be more reasonable with it. I like what the, the staff has done, but you still kept the commercial and industrial in. And I, I'm just not going to support if it's commercial and industrial. It just, in my mind, it just makes no sense. But when we start talking about what's going to happen, everybody wants a beautiful community to live in, nice houses, nice trees, shaded trees and everything. So I'm going to be supportive of that, but we just need to make sure. And I, I really liked the idea that you showed what happens to a 50-year-old tree versus this, this size, the DBH and all that, because it, it makes sense. So I think we, as a council, just need to try to make sure we're as reasonable as possible when it comes down to what we can live with that is reasonable for all concerned. Because I think everybody here loves trees. No one wants to do the wrong thing. But as the mayor said at the last meeting, somebody's going to leave here upset. But I think because we were all elected to do the right thing, we're going to try our best to do the right thing, but it definitely needs to be reasonable in what we decide, for sure. So, so hopefully council is in agreement. I can get agreement that when it comes down to, to industrial and commercial, we're in good shape and certainly want to do it, because that is definitely not the scope of what we asked for in the beginning. It was really residential, so.
I would say, going back to when we started this, and it seems like a long time ago now, we, we had more finite vision. And then clearly we have a care, a concern for trees, or we wouldn't have had so much input from so many committees and so many people. And we wouldn't still be doing this now if we didn't care about and love trees. I said it last time, I'll say it again, it just sometimes seem if you're willing to look at compromise, I mean, up here, we have to, because we don't just represent the tree people. We don't just represent the developers. We represent 47,000 people. And again, I think I said at the last meeting, I write 47,000 on every one of my agendas because I've got to remember that there's a lot of people that aren't here that I'm representing. So with that being said, I would like to ask a question because I've seen it come across recently. Are, have there been changes or more emphasis in Tallahassee in regards to landowners' rights?
Yes, sir, there has. We have seen recently that the, is now a requirement that there's a property rights element put into the comprehensive plan. You'll be seeing that coming up in the next few weeks. There has recently been a provision, I think it was a couple of years, I think it was two years ago, maybe three now, that talks about the fact that the city cannot request or require a permit or tree replacement if a tree is replaced from a residential develop, not, I'm sorry, a residential property and it's been shown by an arborist that it is dangerous. So there has also been an increase in, and I think the attorney mentioned this at their last meeting, there has been an increase, I mean, some changes to strengthen the Burt Harris Act. So we have seen at the state level, certainly, we have seen a great number of incremental changes to make Florida more property rights friendly, in my opinion.
Okay. I will move forward before I comment on that again. Member Robinson?
Yes, thank you. First off, I, I appreciate the maps and the, all of the drawings, the conservation, the land use and what we can use, what we have for vacant residential, potential residential properties and, and everything. So as I, as I looked through this and I, I had a, a view of consideration, as I, I had the, the view or the feedback from T, TEC. I had it from Planning and Zoning and I can imagine what the view or consideration that the developers and owners wanted to look at. And additionally, I, I looked out in the future and I, I tried to imagine what the, the buyers and the owners of the future would want to see. What they, because what we do now is going to affect the future and what that's going to look like. So, and then, and, and lastly, I, I, I looked at what the, the staff, because the staff is in the middle of all of this conglomeration or this cogmire. And, and with these maps, I, I know that land is limited. It is, Titusville cannot, can't grow too much to the west and very little to the east and we can't go too far to the north and we can't go too far to the south. So, so compromise is, is inevitable. So I tried to come up with some, some words that I could grade my decision on, because that's, that's who I am. I, I, I had to have a chart to go by, to put a check here, to put a check there, you know, as you've given me so much information. So I came up with six words and, and I said that, is the standard in this process defined? And when, when I read what came out to me, I had an answer to that. Two, are we given guidance on what we are trying to achieve? And I, I, that's one of the criterias and I would grade things on that. And then I said, the effectiveness of the standard and the guidance that we're given? And then, that's number three. Number four, is, what is the reasonableness of all that is, 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 is being presented by the, the TE, TEC, Planning and Zoning, developers, what the owners want, and especially the future owners, and what the staff is trying to put together? And then the last one that, that I, I put together in my checkmark, is it going to be, is it going to have oversight? Is someone is going to be monitoring all of this? Because if you put all of this in place and, and you come up with these ideas and nobody is watching, no one is babysitting, so to speak, you say, no, that's not an appropriate word now. So as I came to my, my, my conclusion, I tried to do it mathematically and, and so forth. And I did come up with some, some things and all of the considerations and so forth. And so when we get to that point, I have, I have came to, and I, I want to get the view of, of all that are present here. And I will continue the checking off of my checklist a, as we grow, as I hear them. So I haven't closed down all of my, my hearing and my decision-making is not solid, but because I got some more spaces to put checks in. And the checks is, are going to come from all of the individuals that, that are here that's going to give me these things, that they're going to give me the, their view of what to consider. And I'm going to put a checkmark. And then for me, in my going forward, it is, is going to be based on all of that put in on a chart so that I can sit back and say is that I didn't give you my opinion. I give you the facts of what you have given me and this is the conclusion that it leads me to. All right? That's where I stand on the process.
That's a lot.
And take it lightly.
Nor, nor did I. And I would agree that there's certainly a lot of information to come from tonight. And I would add that there is a lot of 46,000 people out there that won't be in your equation. And, and I, I think I have to do that with every single thing we talk about. Because if there's 60, 50, 80, that doesn't mean the other people don't care. It's just not their priority or they're, they're at Little League or, you know, it might be a church. Member Stokoe.
8:30.
I got you. Member Stokoe.
All right. Member Jordan stole my thunder this time.
Good.
Appreciate that.
Even.
No, it kind of goes back to what our vision for the city is. And the maps that start on 228 are very helpful when looking through them, seeing all the conservation, the residential, commercial, and industrial. To me, if we're planning and looking at the future of the city of Titusville, just seeing the amount of commercial and industrial, which in my opinion is not that much, it doesn't make any sense for me, from my perspective, to put a requirement on that. Obviously, we have more residential and when we're talking about quality of life and what we want our community to look like, I do think that we need to have standards in place. Peggy, I was going to see if you could help me out here. To Member Jordan's point, trying to get that low-hanging fruit and moving forward on some wins that we can do right now, I'm looking at this from five different things. Canopy, the heritage trees, waivers and appeals, incentives, and mitigation requirements. That's from my perspective of what I feel like we can potentially adjust, amend, or residential only. Do you think that I'm missing any area of concern?
I think you've hit the big five. There will come up where we will have to talk about some minutia because the, that's the world that the development lives in. But I do think that canopy, heritage trees, waiver provisions, incentives, and mitigation are the, the big topics.
Okay. And to clarify, our current canopy requirement is 10%?
For, only for residential. And we don't really think of it as a canopy. We simply say you have to preserve 10% of the property. So sometimes there's more trees on it than others. Where canopy would only include the area in the actual top of the tree. It wouldn't necessarily include, include the native vegetation that may not be underneath that tree but be adjacent to it.
Okay. And then one of the concerns I saw from the emails I received was the fact of, with this canopy requirement, whatever we potentially set it at, there was some concern about it just being at the beginning or the entrance of a potential development and then clearcutting or knocking down trees for the rest of it. Is there any way to kind, I don't, thinking of this through, is there any way to kind of make a requirement that there's like pockets of canopy throughout? Have you seen that? Is that a thing? Sorry, I know.
I do believe that there is an ordinance out there that does that. Yes, ma'am. But this is where the balancing act comes in. Because in order to keep a property from flooding, we're going to require that you fill the flood to a, elevation to a certain point. If you fill it enough that there, you add three feet of fill on a piece of property, then you're going to make it difficult to preserve that tree. You can put tree wells in and those kind of things, that absolutely can. But then you're talking about, let me start again. There's not much property left in Brevard County or certainly in the city of Titusville that's easy to develop. That happened years ago. So the, every project that we've got is a, is a challenge. It's a challenge because it's got wetlands or it's got area of critical concern or it's got, it's got something. It's got floodplains in it and we require, so we have to, that's why I said it's a balancing act. So let me give you an example. You may have driven by what used to be the Old Eckards and you see that there's a building there and there's a pile of dirt. That pile of dirt's not leaving that property because it's ACC. When Forest Trace was constructed, they had to add more fill to each of their lots because it's in the ACC and we don't allow a certain percentage of dirt to leave that property. So in fact, we don't, most of the time, allow any dirt to leave the property in the ACC. So after the property was graded, they had to go back in there and increase that fill on that property so they could maintain the recharge for the, for the aquifer. So those, some of those people in those neighborhoods have some pretty steep driveways. So if you're, if you're doing that, how are you going to be preserving the tree? And the other issue is, if you leave a tree on a single-family lot, the statute says somebody gets themselves an arborist and that tree is gone. So where are you going to put these large areas that you want to preserve the tree in?
Do we have a minimum, or are heritage trees protected currently in our code?
We have a 20-inch minimum and you have a two-to-one mitigation.
Okay, that was my next question.
So what that means is that the larger trees may have to mitigate more. And then the issue becomes, if you have a really large tree and you've got a two-to-one mitigation, do you have enough space to plant everything you need to?
Yeah.
And right now, at $100 an inch, we have mitigations sometimes that are tens of thousands of dollars, if not more, for a piece of property.
Okay.
One of the things I want to bring your attention to is the property that talks about the four subdivisions that were chosen.
Yeah.
They weren't random, they were the last, not the last four, but they were the most current because we had the most data on them. But in each case, based on our current code, there were more inches of trees preserved than removed. So our current code is, is doing something right. It may not be doing everything right, but there's more tree preservation by inch on the large trees, 20 inches and up, because that's what's required to be mitigated, on every single one of these subdivisions.
Okay, then I have two more questions. Right now, we don't have any incentives in our code, is that correct?
We have, there's a few incentives, but they're pretty minor because we don't have a lot of requirements for mandatory. For instance, we say that you can, instead of preserving the, if you can't, if you can't preserve certain trees, you can instead put 100 square feet of native vegetation equal to a tree for mitigation. So we have that kind of incentive. We also have an incentive right now that says that if we require you do compensatory storage, the mitigation is less. Now, there's argument that what we're doing by that is actually encouraging people to build in the floodplain, but that's, because we're requiring the compensatory storage.
But no incentive for going over like the minimum canopy requirement?
No, because, no, no. No, because, no, no, we don't.
Okay. And then lastly, do we have any, um, language currently about waivers or appeals? If somebody were to go below that 10% threshold where they would appeal to?
The administrator has some flexibility when it comes to landscaping, which is different than the actual tree removal. Uh, for instance, right now, the administrator can reduce the buffer in, on only industrial and resident, um, industrial and commercial to allow a tree to be saved. They can't do that in residential. Uh, but in general, what has to happen is it's, um, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. The administrator has some flexibility.
Okay. I think that's all for now, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Um, I'm going to disagree with Member Jordan, Member Stokoe. I don't have a problem with requiring trees on commercial and industrial. And I had up on Brevard County, I think Brevard County requires 35%. It was something.
No ma'am, not according to.
It wasn't Brevard County, it was Port Reggie?
Could be. There are places that do require that. Brevard County actually allows less in industrial than they do commercial and residential.
And I can understand that, but on the other hand, I, I don't think we should turn around and say it wasn't industrial property, let's just clear cut the whole thing. Um, and especially because we are allowing developers, owners to come in and say, hey, there's this huge tree in the middle, we need to get rid of it. And we can get rid of it, um, if there's no other way around it. But I don't, to come in and just clean everything out and say, I don't need to put anything on this property, I, I think that's just crazy. I mean, we're talking about, we're looking for a town that has appeal. Um, to me, my vision was always Winter Park. I wanna, I wanna live in Winter Park and I don't want to live in Miami. Um, you know, so to say that these pieces of property, um, we're just going to clear cut them, we don't care, I don't think we should do that. So.
You good?
You guys.
Uh, Member Jordan?
Yeah, of course I'm going to respond to that, because that's not what I said. Has, I mean, no developer is going to come in and clear cut the, you, you added those word clear cut and I don't think Member Stokoe and I were saying clear cut, we're just saying that you don't need to have this requirement in industrial and commercial area. The, the developer is going to try to make his development as beautiful as possible and if he's got a tree that he doesn't have to remove, he's not going to remove the tree. It costs money to remove something that you don't need to remove, you know, it just makes no sense. So clear cutting is, is not even in the equation. This is not about being Miami versus someplace else. This is just being reasonable with, um, what is, we're trying to do. Low hanging fruits is what we're looking for. We don't need to be, we, we have not had any requirement for industrial, commercial to this point and now we have it in this red line version, which I don't agree with. So I'm still saying, uh, and you haven't convinced me otherwise, that we need to have it in there, especially when you use, um, clear cutting for sure. I do, go ahead.
I'm sorry if I could, I'd just like to comment that there are landscaping requirements for industrial and commercial.
Absolutely.
And there's still the mitigation requirement if a tree, if trees are removed.
Right.
So it's just not that mandatory 10% preservation.
Right.
And not the mandatory save the large tree. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's the tree. What I'm saying is the tree's in the middle of what I'm trying to build, that tree's gone. You know, I have a right to build what I want, what I'm saying is we need to be reasonable. If there are other trees around, yeah, we're going to preserve those trees because we're not going to knock them down just to be knocking them down. It's not going to be clear cutting. The industrial, you know, the development and I think what Peggy has, has explained to us, I mean, there are things in place already to make sure that they don't just clear cut it as what you're saying. We don't, we don't need requirements because no person who is trying to save money when they develop is just going to knock trees down just to be knocking them down because there is no requirement per what you're saying. There, there are requirements.
That's what I'm trying to make sure, I understand what you're saying.
No, they are, they are required, they are definitely required. But I do have a question about forested, uh, what'd you call it, forested?
Forested wetlands.
Yeah, um, I, I really want to be clear with that. I, I just don't think that you should try to penalize a, um, a landowner because he actually have some trees in a forested area that could be used as mitigation, if you will. To, to say, no, that is exempt and you've got, say, an acre of trees that just happened to be in a, in a forested area, um, and you can't use that to mitigate what you are doing around, to me, it just doesn't make any sense at all.
And that is the current requirement. The code says that you, if you have, it's, if it's required to be preserved from some other reason.
Right.
You can't include it and in your, um, man, in your requirement for landscaping. So if someone, we've had cases where, um, a developer will come in and say, I'm going to save all the wetlands and then they, they don't get to take any of those wetlands and count them toward their landscaping.
Yeah.
And that's the current code. And so, um, what happens is you see people, it's kind of a game that, there's a little dance that we play over there in community development. Um, a, someone will come in and they have a couple of sacrificial lots that they know they're not going to get anyway, but they go ahead and show us the 120 knowing that they're only going to get 117 so they can give up three. So, uh, and it's, and then we have a little dance that we do, you know, requiring things knowing that we can back off. So there's a little bit of give and take on both sides, but right now it is difficult, especially when they come through the public hearing process and they're doing the best they can to make the community happy by saying, we'll give you this, we'll give you this. And that's the next step in the process, they feel like they've been penalized because they've given it all upfront and now they can't utilize it in landscaping.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we're going to move to cards, but I'm going to conclude by saying that I, I agree with, uh, Member Jordan and the, and, and Member Stokoe too, I do believe. When we started this, we were talking about, let's get some low hanging fruit so we can get some tree ordinance rolling here because we care about trees. And now if we get caught up in how we do the, um, incorporated areas, et cetera, um, that gets a little bit tricky. So, y- you know, I, I say we're not going to make everybody happy and we're not going, but we're not going to even be able to, up here on the council, be able to come together for poor Miss Busaka down there and come up with something, but we sure are trying. Okay, we are going to move to cards, so, um, I don't even know how many yet, so just call.
Kay St. Ang.
Yes, I'm Kay St. Ang, Titusville Tree Team, Maryland Avenue. I really did want to communicate with Mr. Jordan, so I'm terribly disappointed that he walked away.
Would you like to, um, I, you know, you want to go to the next one?
Yes.
Me and you sit down just for a second?
I would like to communicate with Mr. Jordan.
Joe Hill.
Howdy guys, again. Um, I'd like to applaud.
Nate, don't forget.
Oh, Joe Hill.
Thank you.
Brownie Avenue, Titusville.
Thank you.
I'd like to applaud the staff for getting, and you guys for initiating this because I have been heartbroken by seeing some of the clear cutting I've seen in some of these developments. An example is Publix, when they put in Publix. We had a council member here, it was, no, you were on council then, but she was, she was wanting to protect a big old oak tree over there and they changed her whole design to make sure they save that oak tree. But when they brought the road in there, they dug up all the roots. So when that big hurricane came through, guess what, the oak tree, it's gone now. So that needs to be something that maybe, if you're going to try to preserve a tree, but, um, the corner of Barney and Park, they put a development in there. They kept their pers- percentage of how many native trees, but all around the edges. They took everything out in the middle. So I just think we could do a better job trying to preserve some of them. I know there's property rights and all this stuff too, but maybe you could have a, a group that would go out and identify some of these trees that you want to protect and make it known to the, if somebody's selling property, well, you, you just can't take that down. I don't know. I'd just throw my ideas out there.
Thank you.
But I appreciate the city looking at this because I think we need to do something.
We have done that. Um, thank you so much, Ms. St. Ang.
Yes, my name is Kay St. Ang, Titusville Tree Team, and I live on Maryland Avenue. Um, the current code allows removal of all but 10% of vegetation, an area of 10% of vegetation. It does not require that any trees be saved, only 10% area vegetation. So that's why two, over two years ago, April 2019, the tree team came together and petitioned council for aid ordinance to prevent removal of all but 10% of vegetation. Uh, the latest two staff's versions have included a requirement of, uh, an area of tree canopy a percentage. And so it's surprising to me that now, um, council is considering backing off on that when both advisory boards have worked diligently on working off of those requirements posed. Um, the latest staff version, July 2021, uh, uh, has several whereas clauses that provide persuasive statements for the passage of this latest proposed ordinance, including compliance with the comprehensive plan that says no clear cutting and the standards of the Tree City USA. One clause has trees retain and filter water. Indeed, a mature oak tree can consume 40,000 gallons of polluted storm water in a year. Without an effective tree protection ordinance, most trees in the 4,800 acres available for development will likely be removed, greatly increasing polluted stormwater discharge into the lagoon. This further degradation of the lagoon would be disastrous environmentally and economically, uh, Mr. Jordan, it would be environmentally and economically disastrous, reducing property values and dissuading prospective residents and businesses from locating in Titusville if the lagoon was degraded to the extent that this clear cutting would allow. One whereas clause indicates trees provide shade and reduce temperatures, but staff's required preserve canopy of 15% of a residential development area is inadequate to provide sufficient shade to reduce temperatures in neighborhoods. We need to require at least 25% preserve canopy. To reduce temperatures for residents, add a provision that the required preserve canopy be located near the houses as Sarah Stokoe has recommended and protected areas noted on the site plan and not just around the periphery of developments. We need those trees to provide temperature reduction and livability in our new residential developments. E at the top of page five?
How many do we have?
I got a little bit more. I would ask that all, um, required, that the ordinance in front of you requires, all required tree canopy shall be permanently protected in a recorded plat or declaration of covenants. This should be HOA covenants. These trees should be protected in common lands owned by the HOA so that in, because we know that the state regulations do not allow for permanent protection of trees on homeowners' lots, therefore they should be on homeowners, in the homeowner's common land. We need to provide permitted protection for heritage trees, 36 inches DBH or larger rather than 46. If you will make these additional, uh, changes to the staff's recent, uh, ordinance, I think we will have a significant ordinance that will make Titusville truly a gateway to nature and the space industry. Thank you.
Thank you. That was close to three minutes, closer to three and a half. So let's work hard on that. Ms. Kate does a great job of trying to stay within that and I, I took that in consideration. But how many cards do we have?
We have about 11 or 12.
Let's work hard on staying on three minutes. I really don't want to cut somebody off. I don't want to be that rude person here at three minutes. Done. But if you are within 15 seconds or so, we'll go. But if you've got a minute and a half, so we're going to stop and say thank you very much. So we're three minutes, uh, next card.
Kim Ruzanka.
It wasn't, it wasn't Ms. Wells though.
Glad I'm not calling the names. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Diesel, members of the city council. My name is Kim Ruzanka. I'm with the Law Room of Lacy Lyons-Ruzanka out of the Rockledge office. Um, I prepared for you a package, this is somewhat unusual, I know this, there's no votes today, but there's a lot of information in this ordinance, there's a lot of information before you. I didn't see the 4,000 pages, but it's kind of ironic when you're talking about tree preservation. Um, this is, I, I, my son came with me last time, he's in college studying urban planning and he said, no one was against the ordinance. I said, did you not hear what I said? So I wanted everyone to know that I am against this new ordinance, hence opposition to tree preservation ordinance on this title page. And I'm on behalf of several clients, two that own property, two are looking at property to develop here, and this will substantially impact their ability to, to develop. Uh, the actual ordinance says tree protection, not tree preservation, I'm not sure if you noticed that. And I'd ask that, uh, you know, you think about the intent has been stated by, uh, Council Member Jordan was, was, um, you know, preservation, not protection. Uh, my first concern is excessive regulation. As I said last time, you went from four pages to 14, it's actually three and a half to 14 and a half pages with this ordinance. There's a lot of information in here and I don't think it was with the intent of what I understood, um, Council Member Jordan to state. Um, I've actually stated the specific concerns with my excessive regulation. I don't know of the evidence to support these changes. Just because the county does it or Naples does it, doesn't make it right for the city. So you have to have some evidence and you have to figure out what that evidence is and why it is and how this is going to impact anyone who wants to develop and what's left of land to develop, which is difficult to develop as, um, Ms. Busaka stated. Not all trees should be created equally. That was discussed last time, some trees are more valuable than others. Uh, there's many definitions for heritage trees. I cited things in here that I found just by Googling, um, some heritage trees are 72 inches, but sometimes they do go out in the community and identify certain trees that they want to protect. Outstanding specimen by virtue of location, health, age, size or rarity. And so there are many different ways to define heritage trees. Um, a heritage oak, heritage oaks, heritage oak, excuse me. And then there's also just on page, um, four, five and six, things to consider as well. Age, species, historical significance, things like that. So it doesn't have to be a straight 48 inches or 4, 46 inches, 36 inches. Um, so also too, the replacement of one inch caliber to two and a half inch caliber, how is that decided upon? Some of these criteria for removal are vague and ambiguous, there's a lack of, a lack of objective guidance. I don't know what they mean and these are new. Unintended consequences, are there going to be double penalties? The costs are going to be greatly increased, I'm sure, but do we know how much? Um, I will sum, um, I'd ask that you keep to the intent that you demand evidence to support, that you grandfather the sketch plat, it's still not grandfathered sufficiently. You need to add a sketch plat to A and B of section 13 and delete D in its entirety. And I'd ask you also consider Florida statute 70.002, which is the Property Owner's Bill of Rights. And that number seven says to relate to relief or payment of compensation when a new law, rule, regulation or ordinance of the state or political entity unfairly affects your property. And I submit that this will unfairly affect property and you don't even know what it's going to do because it hasn't been taken to that nth degree.
Thank you.
So I'd ask that you consider not adopting all of this ordinance. So I'd ask that you consider not adopting all of this ordinance. Thank you.
Next card.
Thomas Perez.
Hold on, hold on one second, hold on one second.
I had a question.
Members Stokoe.
In regards to the grandfathering, I thought we put the grandfathering back in. I know P&amp;Z or one on the board said they didn't want the grandfathering. I don't, I thought we were putting it back in.
We put the language that was the original grandfathering.
Okay.
Sketch plat, I could spend a whole lot of time talking about that because the survey requirements are different at sketch plat than they are preliminary plat. So right now, a sketch plat is required to only have 20-inch trees. A preliminary plat's required to have six-inch trees. So if you grandfather a sketch plat against the survey, then depending on what the decision is as to what preserve trees you need to preserve, you may have missed that entirely. There is, I can tell you this, there is one, there is one subdivision that I know of today where the sketch plat is under review. So should you say that all sketch plats will be grandfathered against this new ordinance and has to meet the old ordinance, that will be one subdivision as it stands today. So that may be what you want, but I didn't want to just remove sketch plat if you didn't understand the implications of that. So by leaving it in, it gave the staff the opportunity to discuss that with you because it's, it's not, it's the one place where the, you take a big step from sketch plat to preliminary plat for the amount of information that's required.
I guess my intent would be if somebody started the process anywhere with the old language, I would like to see them grandfathered in. That being said, I don't want to see them picking and choosing and say, "Oh, well, I'm grandfathered in here, but now you guys did this, and this is in my favor." If they want to stay grandfathered in, if they've started like the process of picking up paper and started submitting anything, I would like to see them to be able to be grandfathered in if they so choose, or they can go with what we pass new, pick one or the other. That's my, I don't know what council feels, but I just wanted to.
Well, I would, I would add on to that, that, because, you know, kind of stole my thunder. But, but I would ask that if there is a project started specifically, and it's done in sections, and this section is done, and this section is done, and now we have a new tree ordinance, and it would affect the next three or four seconds, that, that needs to be grandfathered If I, if I own land and I have developments going on, and I've got two done, but I've got three planned already.
Well, I'd like to give you an example of that. Antigua Bay is now Tranquility has 2,400 lots. They're talking about their first 100, not 2,400 residential units plus all of that industrial. Do you want to say that everything except that, um, that 300-acre property, that you're only going to require this new requirement for the first 100 lots?
Well, I, I wouldn't even speak to that. I, I got a few things in mind, but.
But that's what you said, so we need to find two.
No, I've got some sections that are done. Antigua Bay's got nothing done.
Well, they have a preliminary plat.
They have a plat, but they've not done any work.
Well, but you see, once you have the preliminary plat, you have the engineering approved. And in every case except Tranquility, construction, they've, they have a construction permit that was issued to them about eight months ago. So we, I think we need to talk about that issue so that you understand how big that might be.
Okay. I'll back away from that because I'm not sure that, I, I was not envisioning that. I was envisioning somebody who's already got houses built, and then they've got some more areas back here that are part of their program that haven't been started yet.
Okay, so.
But they've already got houses up, and they had a set of rules to live by on those first sets.
Okay. Well, it would, I will, I will show you some examples, and then you can decide what you think. How about that?
Thank you. Next card. Yeah, Member Jordan, I see it now. Member Jordan, relax, relax, relax. You talked my football analogy, I'll never forgive you.
Ms. Rizanka actually brought up a good point as far as definition of what we're going to call these things. How, how are you feeling? Are you feeling comfortable with what we have in the red light ordinance as far as definition is concerned with the trees?
Could you be more precise into what definition you're referring to?
Well, I'm looking at what she has given us, and there are different definitions of trees, heritage trees versus other trees. And I, I'm just, you know, I, she has reminded us that she is an attorney, and we have this new requirement as far as what landowners' rights are. And I, I think she's, she may be shooting across the ball to say if this thing is not right, you could find yourself in litigation. And I know our attorney, our attorney don't like litigation for sure, and I, I just want us to not just arbitrarily put something down on paper as far as what we think heritage trees are, other types of trees are, and then we find ourselves in litigation because that's not really what it should be, or it's not concise enough.
After much, after much review, I believe that these are all standards that are determined by community. And as much as attorneys like to see a specific number tied to a specific requirement, I don't believe that that is possible in a tree ordinance. Unless you want to set a standard that says that, well, that won't even work, never mind. I honestly, I, I have looked everywhere because our attorney has been discussing this with me for months about this issue, and he would love to see us be able to point to a study or something that says, "This is the number that you should use." And even the, I want to make sure I get this right, but I, I don't remember what the group, but we even have a study that I think may have been sent to you that was about four years ago, and I don't remember what was the Arborists or something, but I'll get this study for you, that says why we no longer recommend this. I mean, they've even changed their, their recommendation because they've learned more. I think we're kind of in the, the more we know that sometimes change. So I'm unaware that that is done, and I've looked, we have called every community that we know of in the state of Florida that has a canopy requirement and asked them to see their ordinance so we could look at their whereas clauses and say, "Why did you adopt that number?" And there, we have not been able to find one study or rationale that we could use. Now, I'm sure that Mr. Broom is very nervous by this testimony, and Ms. Rizanka plans to make me the, the center point of her lawsuit, but that's the truth as I understand it.
No, that, that's fine. I'm fine with that. Ms. St. Ang says something that got my ear. She was saying the exist, the existing ordinance now only required 10% of the, what did she say, the, the vegetation. Can you explain?
Sure. We, we currently, I can, I can read the specific requirement to you. It's that all single-family residential lots or developments shall preserve an area of approved low and moderate tolerant water-usage mixed vegetation, native trees and shrubs are preferred, equal to at least 10% of the total lot or development area. So if you have 10 acres, you're expected to show one acre of preservation. It's that simple. It's math, plug and chug, and.
Plug and chug. I've heard that one before, for sure.
That's what it is.
All right, we, we need to go on, but I want to tell Ms. Rizanka, I saw you in the paper, and congratulations on your awards for sure, so.
Okay, thank you.
Next card, please.
Good evening. I'm Tom Perez, 3025 South Washington Avenue, and I'm also a member of the Environmental Commission. We are discussing the tree ordinance at this meeting. However, my comments are just as relevant to the issue of low-impact development. They concern the effects of development, which by and large has the greatest negative impact on the overall environment, and in particular, the Indian River Lagoon. Before I start, I want to make it clear that development is a part of the normal evolution of our communities. It is necessary. The question is how to bring balance into the equation so that development does not occur at the expense of our environment. Development needs to take the advantage of new technologies, which are coming all the time, based on data, that guides how we need to proceed and address the continued deterioration of our environment. Our environment is inextricably tied to the health and well-being of all the ecosystems that support every living thing. For example, we now know from data collected on the flow of water in the Indian River Lagoon during a one-year study that there is no apparent flow occurring in either direction between the causeways around Titusville. What this means is that whatever gets flushed into the lagoon here in Titusville stays in the lagoon here in Titusville. And it is apparent that this has been the case for a long time. So it's no surprise that the condition of the lagoon has been and will continue to deteriorate. We are at a point where response to public pressure has resulted in some action. The value citizens place on their environment resulted in their vote of approval of a half cent tax. This helps to begin to pay for the cleanup of our past negligence, which resulted from needlessly destructive developmental practices. We need to change the practices that have brought us to this juncture, or we can only expect more of the same. The decisions facing council demand in-depth knowledge of the issues at hand. Council have selected the individual commissioners for their backgrounds and expertise. These commissioners have done the research and consulted with other resources as needed to give council recommendations that are based on science and what they judge to be best for this community. Council also must read and dig into the issues to appreciate and understand the recommendations made by these commissioners. Briefings are not a substitute, cannot take the place of, and do not do justice to the work that has been performed by the environmental and the PNC commissions to bring their recommendations to you.
It's going to be 15 seconds if you're going to finish.
You have the vested power and responsibility to make these decisions that are in the best interest of your command, that these recommendations ensure. The Indian River Lagoon will not be getting better on its own, and in the best circumstances, based on models from other areas undertaking this work, it will take decades of continued improvements to make it healthy again. Titusville has used up its ecological budget. The consistent downward trend illustrated by the latest Marine Resources Council report verifies what many have been saying. The Indian River Lagoon is in a state of collapse.
All right, we need to stop.
Manatees are dying in record numbers.
Dip, dip, dip.
From starvation.
That's, that's, we're good. I appreciate your time. Your three minutes is up, and three minutes, 30 seconds is up. So thank you very much. All right, we're going to do a tutoring in my educational class. We need to practice our speeches on three minutes. All right, because we're going to start stopping at three minutes because my extra 15 seconds is getting really long. So with that, let's go to the next card.
Tony Shifalo.
Mayor, if I, I could, well, the next speaker's coming up. Staff is going to request now that we table items 12C and 12D. Move that to August 24th at your presentations meeting.
Thank you, sir.
I, I need a.
Need a vote. 12C and 12D.
We'll, we'll move it to your August 24th, 5:30 presentations meeting.
I got a motion that's stated. Second, all those in favor say yes. Opposed? Motion carries.
Tony Shifalo, 715 Tropic Street. I had a little three-minute speech prepared, and I do practice my words.
Oh, you do. She does.
But I think what I'd rather do is just kind of speak and answer a few things that have been said in the room tonight. I was going to talk about things that happened at the special session Tuesday, July 20th, when Patricia Weeks of the Space Coast Association Realtors President expressed that oak tree roots can be very bad for foundations, roads, and sewer systems. And I was going to tell her that, well, foundations, roads, and sewer systems can be very bad for tree roots and, which should be protected from desecration by development. And I wanted to speak to Kim Rizanka, who happens to be here tonight, who stated that a vocal minority asked for these changes, and it's unfair to many property owners. We are.
Turn around, turn around.
We are not a vocal minority. We are representing a lot of Titusville citizens. I represent my immediate neighbors on a two-block area. There are many members of the tree team that are members of other organizations that represent a lot of people, like the Sierra Club, the Titusville Garden Club, for example. And it may be unfair to development property owners, but to those of us who live in the city, it's a very fair thing to want, to protect all the trees that we can because they contribute so much to saving the environment. And as Tom was talking about, the degradation of the Indian River Lagoon, we've got to remember, lagoon, it's not a river. What goes into it stays, and the causeways trap it. And I'm so passionate about this, and I'm so sorry to take up your time. I should come and talk to you individually because I have a lot to say to you, Mr. Jordan, with your opinions, that the government should not be in the business to prevent smart development, but instead should work with developers to preserve as many trees as possible without making it mandatory. You know, if it's not mandatory, they're not going to do it. It's so easy to bring a bulldozer in and cut the trees down. It's not like they have to individually ax each one. And you also suggested, Mr. Jordan, that giving the administrators, and who are the administrators, giving them more leeway to make decisions instead of making the developer go through the Board of Adjustments and Appeals or the TEC, which is the city's tree board, to make appeals because it would be cheaper and easier on the developer. Who cares about?
Thank you. Thank you. Next card, please.
Looks like Yvette, it's, I think it's F-L-I-S or F-L-I-G.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Yvette Fless. I live at 4860 Santa Rosa Avenue in Titusville, and I have lived here for 30 years, give or take. And I live here, this is my home, and I have seen clear cutting, and I have seen, you know, wetlands destroyed. And I understand that this is good for business, but this is not good for me or my neighbors, the people that I live with, my children, my grandchildren growing up, who would really like to have the opportunity to, you know, go into the river again one day or not sweat like crazy in April because the trees are all gone, which of course, as we all know, regulate temperature. I mean, if, if we've decided that 10% of new homes, the new building residences, whatever home, residential areas should be preserved for trees, that still means that 90% of them that are there existing are gone, and that's a pretty big number. And if we decide that we don't, industries should be exempt from this, what, what is the, industry, the people who have the businesses don't live where I live, and they don't apparently have the concern for their children or their grandchildren or the students that they see walking down the street to have a normal, healthy life? I mean, why are we not being considered? Why is it only the businesses that are considered? Why is it not your grandchildren or your children or your great-grandchildren or your ability to stick your feet in Sandpoint Park, in the water there? Or, see, the manatees that we used to see just by looking into the water, now you can't see anything, is it so dirty? Why, why does that not matter? Why are you guys not caring about the land that you live on, the world that you live in? And my home, Titusville, this is what we hired you for. And. And we hired you. We hired you to represent us. I am one of 46, 47,000 people that live in the city that voted for you guys. The guys that have the businesses, they're not voting for you. They're, maybe they're supporting your political career, but they're not voting for you. You work for us, and I wish that you would remember that. And take care of your environment.
Thank you. I think I'll just move on to the next one. Next card.
Kate Perez.
Name and address for the record, please.
Kathleen Perez. I live at 3025 South Washington Avenue in Titusville. So I live in Titusville. I'm a landowner, but I also live here. In the last few meetings, when I've heard the tree ordinance discussed, I've been distressed to witness the developers, lawyers for developers, and members of the Florida Association of Realtors, none of whom live here in Titusville, attend these meetings and argue that they or their clients are being treated unfairly if they're made to follow our zoning rules or, God forbid, if we add a rule that would preserve a small portion of our existing tree canopy. I've heard them say, "Well, I'm a property owner in Titusville, and I can't make money on the land I bought unless I get a variance to circumvent the rules." And they get one. If I buy something, let's say a car, intending to make money reselling it, and turns out that I can't make money, isn't that my own miscalculation? Over and over, I've heard city council members saying, "We used to have a reputation for being anti-development. We can't stop progress." I'd suggest that we now have a reputation for an anything-goes type of development, and that's why these developers are here. Melbourne and Vieira are already overbuilt, hot, crowded, have terrible traffic. So they come here, but I don't want to live in Melbourne or Vieira. I used to teach in Vieira. The trees are all evenly spaced palms, no canopy, no diversity. Almost every house there is in a gated neighborhood with wands that are so fertilized that they're just basically polluted. I couldn't wait to get home and see my live oaks and my variety of wildflowers. I want shade in the city, and I have to, I've yet to hear a city council member say something like, "Well, we can't get a reputation for voting against the well-being of our citizens." We don't want our own citizens to live in hotter and hotter neighborhoods, neighborhoods that increasingly flood due to clear cutting of trees. Developers didn't elect you. The Florida Association of Realtors didn't elect you. So I feel like you're honor-bound to vote in our interest. We don't want the excess flooding. We don't want the hotter temperatures, and it's dangerous for everybody here. So I heard that the city is going to put in a water retention system in front of La Cita. I think I heard that correctly. But trees are a water retention system, okay? And they're free because they're already there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
It's Pam. It looks like D-I-R-S-C-K-C-H-K-A.
Yeah, that's, that's a tough one. My name is Pam Derschka.
You're done.
Boy, that was quick.
You're done. All right, start clock. There we go.
All right. And I live on Arbor Ridge Lane in Titusville. I live close by Forest Trace off Sisson Road. So I was able to watch the neighborhood that, that developed under the current guidelines. A neighbor did a drone update periodically for our neighborhood Facebook group, and so we got to see it really close up at a lot of stages. When we watched the bulldozers level the site, I couldn't imagine that they even left more than a few trees. Then I heard they maintained 10% of the trees. Well, there's a section at the front and a little section in the back. The bulk of the property was scraped to sand and dirt, and they did bring in a lot of fill, as was mentioned here at this meeting. During that time, we saw gopher tortoises passing through our neighborhood. There are now 35 gopher tortoises who have made their home in the swell between Arbor Woods and Arbor Ridge, as identified from the FWC in March of this year. I believe the timing would support the likelihood that they came from Forest Trace. I wonder how many did not survive. Forest Trace and other similar developments show that the current tree requirements are not strong enough. In fact, 15% of development area and preserved canopy is inadequate. Please require at least 25% of the preserved tree canopy. The Forest Trace example also shows that a significant portion of preserved tree canopy must be near the houses, not just along the periphery of the development. In addition, the designation of heritage trees should start at 36 diameter breast height, not at 46, like was mentioned, because 46-inch trees are rare indeed. A significant amount of tree canopy will provide shade to cool the neighborhoods, and we need that. They provide quality of life. Trees reduce polluted stormwater discharge into the lagoon. Trees provide connection to nature. Trees provide wildlife habitat. An inadequate amount of tree canopy will not produce these benefits. I applaud the TEC and the Titusville Tree Team for all their work to bring the changes to the code. While they've been working with the city on this, it's become too late for projects already clearing their land. I understand 1,400 acres are currently being developed. We all drive by these projects. However, 4,800 additional acres are available for development, so it's critical that the code is updated. If continuing moving all the trees as currently allowed by code, the results will be devastating. Titusville's motto is gateway to nature and space. Let's not remove the nature from our motto. Thank you.
Thank you. And she practiced her three minutes.
I did.
I could tell. Next card, please.
William Klein.
Mr. Klein, did you practice your three minutes?
I hope to be less. I'm Bill Klein from 3 Indian River Avenue. Heat kills people. In the U.S., hundreds of people die from heat exhaustion each year. Tree canopy shading and transportation reduces air temper, air and surface temperatures below the tree canopy. Air temperatures in Florida rural areas can be 17 degrees cooler than nearby cities. Surface temperatures of walls and roofs can be reduced by 45 degrees. Parking under trees can reduce temperature inside the car by 45 degrees. The Japanese practice of forest bathing is the practice of immersing yourself in nature, using your senses to derive a whole range of benefits for your physical, mental, emotional, and social health. It can boost immunity and lead to fewer days of illness and faster recovery from injury or surgery. If improving the health and welfare of the residents and saving the lives is not enough incentive to provide tree canopy to shade yards, playgrounds, and walkways, then maybe preventing 2 billion gallons of polluted water per year from draining into the IRL will be incentive to provide tree canopy and require LID. It seems Titusville City Council spends more money designing gateway entrances that aren't used, publishing Titusville Talking Points, putting up signs advertising, "We are the gateway to nature in a tree city." Then we do planting trees. Our tree canopies over walkways and over our parks to improve the health and welfare of the residents and to reduce the polluted stormwater from flowing into the storm ponds and the IRL. Advertising that we are the gateway to nature in a tree city does not make it so. Preserving and planting trees for their cooling shade, reducing stormwater pollution, and providing food and habitat for wildlife to make, will make us the gateway to nature in a tree city. We need canopy. Atlanta has 50%. Pittsburgh has a goal of 60%. And Fort Bragg is going for 70%. And we're begging for 25. That's a disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Next card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston. First of all, I need to thank Mr. Larisse for correcting me on that issue about the software, because I was way off.
You had me confused, too.
Way, way off. Okay. So on this tree ordinance, though, I went up to, I can't remember whether it's Fairfield Oaks or Fairfax Oaks, but they have a tree up there. It's a live oak tree. I think it's called Quercus virginianus or something like that. And it's, they say it's 2,500 years old. It's a big live oak tree. Big, big. And that's here in Florida. And what I've seen happen is I've seen a number of oaks fall over during the storm. They're not the live oaks, though. They're these, look something like, look like live oaks, but they're, some people call them water oaks, laurel oaks, things like that. And they don't have anywhere near the lifetime of a live oak. Nothing, nothing like it. So I'm particularly pointing that out because there is a distinction between some trees that is very significant. Like, for example, a maple tree only has a short time of life. And some of these other trees, they really, they, they have a limited life, and that's it. It's like everybody's got a clock in them. Like, we don't live much beyond 120 years, and that's it. So these trees also have clocks in them, too, and I think that should be something that should be recognized. I wanted to also mention something I've said before, and that is that, is that we are also controlled by these, some erroneous flood zones. And erroneous flood zones add up to, when it's high, it's too high, it takes out more trees. What happened in my neighborhood, which we had numerous live oak trees, numerous, and I lived right there behind what's now Regions Bank, over there on Garden Street. I lived there for numerous years. And so they had a site plan that preserved all these oaks, these oaks, and then a few years later, they died, very tragically. So it's, when you talk about tree protection, that's an important thing here because it was just a little bit of parking there and so forth like that as far as during construction. But a few years later, these nice, beautiful live oak trees, they died. So I'm especially looking for the pre-tree protection part. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Patricia Weeks.
I've become quite famous today. Oh, Patricia Weeks, president of Space Coast Association of Realtors. Hello. And I am here again, speaking for the association, sort of. I'm going to step outside my role as president here in a second because I wanted to say a couple of things. As a, as a Realtor who shows property and sold many houses up here in Titusville, thank you very much for not wanting to do the commercial and industrial areas. I think that that goes back to, again, your main point of what you all wanted to do. One thing that's not, excuse me, brought up at all is the cost of this to the future homeowners, because it will not be the builders who pay this. It will be the future homeowners who will have to pay the additional cost. Everybody is screaming about affordable housing, and this will affect the cost of homes in Titusville. And so consequently, that has to be factored in. My buyers all want to live in nice-looking neighborhoods. And if you go to any of these new subdivisions, yes, they may move, have to take down the trees to put in the infrastructure because everybody wants sewer, not septic, they want underground utilities, they want all those things. So they have to tear up the ground in order to do that and would make it very hard. However, when you drive through, they all have preserve areas. My own neighborhood is a new neighborhood. I bought new four years ago, and you either live on a retention pond or you live up against a preserve area. And there are walking paths and everything, and that's what most people want. And so when they move here and these new subdivisions that are put in, yes, they do have to take down some of the trees, but they do try and save them, and they save them in beautiful ways. And as she was saying, all the neighborhoods that have been built actually saved more than what they were required to because they want them to look nice. They get more money for them if you're not backed up to another house. If you're backed up to a pond or to a retain, or to a preserve area, they're going to get more money for that home, the builder is. So that's why I would love to see it not get changed, if possible. And I want to make sure I'm looking at my notes and that. And also, when it comes to all the tree canopy thing, insurance companies are not happy with trees overhanging homes because they can fall during storms, as we know. So we all love a nice, big tree canopy, but that's something that also has to be taken into account as far as how big the trees are, that you can run into issues. I mean, the insurance companies are really dictating so many things now on even the age of your roof. If it's older than 10 years old, you can't get insurance. They want it replaced. So I am done, but thank you and thanks a lot for mentioning me. I'm really a nice person, so. Are you happy to talk to you?
All right, next card, please.
Hi, I'm Laurlee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue in Memes. However, I do own a business here in Titusville. And I grew up in Titusville, and I love Titusville. So I spent the last couple of days, last week, over in Bonita Springs, going to the FWC meetings, you know, trying to find out about the status of manatees in the Indian River Lagoon. It's not pretty. And then I spent all day today at the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program Management Board and their STEM committee meetings. And then again, there was a lot of reports on the status of manatees in the northern Indian River Lagoon. And what I found out today is it's even worse than, than what I thought because our, our manatees in, in the Indian River Lagoon, they've actually been suffering from malnutrition for years. It didn't just happen this year. Our manatees have been undernourished and haven't had enough to eat for a long, long time, maybe as far back as 2013. So where you have manatees that are fat and happy at Crystal River, where they have, you know, plenty to eat because they've been successful with seagrass restoration, our manatees over here have been suffering for years. And this year, it, they finally got to where their bodies just couldn't take it anymore. And so, you know, we saw all these pictures of these flat manatees, you know, laying on boards with their ribs sticking out, with their little peanut heads. And the, the one thing that they, that kept coming out was pollution in the northern Indian River Lagoon has killed the seagrass beds. Well, guys, we're it. There is no other community up here in the Indian, northern Indian River. And they've done, Gary Zerillo from FIT has done studies on the water movement in the Indian River Lagoon. The water in the Titusville area, it takes a year for that water to have any kind of movement. Same thing with the southern Mosquita Lagoon and the northern Indian, northern Banana River. So these three major estuaries that are right here that are ground zero for the whole eastern Florida manatee population in the wintertime, we have no water movement here. So we, we have to look at what we're allowing to go into the water. And, and so trees, they're nice. I mean, they, they cool the neighborhoods, they, they take away heat, but they're also an investment in the health of the Indian River Lagoon. And you've got to look at it that way, too. We, you know, there's going to be stronger stormwater rules coming down the pipe and low-impact development. And so there, in this tree ordinance, I think staff has done a really good job. There's, there's a lot of ways that the tree... There's, there's a lot of ways that the tree preservation areas can be done, like in low-impact development, stormwater retention and detention areas, buffer, buffers, wetlands, and wetland, wetland buffers, so, and there's also incentives. So, there, there are ways to do this. It, it's not a punishment, it's an investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Bruce Moy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I apologize for my dress, this is my field inspection outfit, not my public hearing outfit.
Name and address, please.
Bruce Moy, representing the HBCA, Allen O'Gally Boulevard. I kind of, hopefully, I'll be more, very specific on what I like and don't like about this ordinance. We've talked about this before, and I'm not going to change my mind, we did say that we were in favor of the staff's version, but we did have some, some items that we did like to be looked at, and specifically, some of them were actually talked about earlier tonight. One was that all trees are not created equal. We agree, we would like you to add hardwoods to that language, because I don't think we need to be mitigating for palm trees, I think we've got plenty of those, and probably not even pines. Some of the things that were also talked about were the forested wetland credits, should we be giving them, or should we not? And I think the answer is emphatically yes. And, and the memo that I provided previously with those bullet point items dated July twentieth, we would feel that if you have met a certain criteria, that you should be, you've done enough, you've done a lot, like, if you're going to preserve, put into preservation for a forested wetland on your property that takes up over fifty percent of your property, I think you've done a pretty good job preserving, doing tree preservation. So, we would hope that would be enough. Also, another item that came up was the commercial and, and the, the industrial, obviously, we're on board with that, I think that's a great way for this board to head on that item. And then, another item was about the Skets Platte grandfathering. I think that that one subdivision, if you could correct me, is probably Huntington. Peggy, would that be the one? No? Okay, well, then, good, well, then, we won't be affected by that one, so. But I still think that's a good idea, if it's not the one, if it's the one, I don't know what that is. But, um, so, just.
Has it been approved?
Has it been approved? Okay, so, we're good, so, we don't have to go, okay, that's awesome. And then, there was some other incentives on there that we thought, that we thought would be advantageous, and that would be to, once you've met a certain requirement, that we just don't need to keep going, because if you've preserved so much, don't penalize them again by making them mitigate for, for the fact that they've preserved so much of the existing canopy and trees. You know, especially for those properties that are impacted by so many other items that she talked about, that it, you know, they have very little land to develop, so don't, don't overregulate them. So, I think that's, we're specific in that, and, and besides with those issues in mind, we're still in favor of that, of the staff's version, especially compared to the other versions that you guys have in your packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Mary Spar.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mary Spar, it's, oh, I guess the clock has started, I'm living cocoa. And actually, I'm representing the Sierra Club tonight. So, Sierra Club has talked about this ordinance quite a bit, and we want an ordinance that will work. And in order to work, it has to be balanced. You have to balance the economic growth with the environmental concerns. And when you're looking for balance, it is a very difficult thing to achieve. So, you have to have something that gives a priority thing to the environmental community, as well as meets some priority wishes of the development community. And that particular balance has been found, we believe, by, for the environmental community giving a strong canopy requirement, and I do mean, strong in the way of quality, that the canopy is measured and compliance is demonstrated by canopy areas, something that's going to be much more practical for the developers, actually. And for the development community, the mitigation needs to be reduced. And then, to tie the two together, you have incentives. And this is kind of the framework that staff's ordinance has, the compromise ordinance has that, and I say it's very difficult to achieve, because you change one thing, and that affects others. We would like to see, just if I can go through very, very quickly, staff, we'd like you to authorize staff to look at a few things. Their language on the canopy areas has some inconsistencies and possible legal loopholes, we'd like you to authorize them to take a look at that, and give more specifics in how plant a tree, canopy from plant to tree will be measured. Right now, it's quite unfair to developers, because it's the canopy that exists on a small tree, which is not much. I'll finish up very soon. Okay. We want to avoid the legal problem with Florida statutes, and have staff look at explicitly saying that required canopy areas shall not include portions of individual residential lots, and.
That's good.
That's it.
That was a good stopping point, obviously.
Yes, I'll stop there.
I appreciate your words, and it's all thought out, thank you. Next card, please.
The last card is Robin Fisher.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor.
Hello, sir. Name and address, there you go.
Robin Fisher, ten nineteen Irwin Avenue. Was not planning on speaking tonight, but, and I've heard some of the speakers speak to you five or six different times on this issue, and I've kind of sat in the background, kind of quiet, just listening. But Ms. Wasaka said something tonight that was interesting to me, that last four developments came in, she said that they preserved more trees than actually this new ordinance would require, or something, something along those lines, right? Yeah.
Let's just say it was brilliant.
Okay, yeah. So, I kind of like brilliance. So, with that in mind, I'm trying to think, do we even have a tree problem? So, I'm, been in Titusville since nineteen eighty-nine, live on the river. I was one of the county commissioners that pushed hard that we put the half-cent sales tax in to clean the lagoon up. Got a business, so I care about everything that everybody out here says to care about, but I tell you, I don't like this ordinance. As a county commissioner, I always told my county staff members, don't bring anything that makes development harder to do, because it's hard enough. And if you're, if you ever try to develop anything in this town or this county, the rules and ordinance that you have to go through today makes it very, very difficult to develop. In Titusville, believe it or not, and the reason we were able to create the Economic Development Zone, was because we went through the city, and we looked at all the land that was federally owned, it was state-owned, it was city-owned, it was county-owned, and it was a lot. It was more than fifty percent of our landmass. We don't have a tree problem in North Bay Harbor. If you want to see a tree problem, go to Viera. There is a lot of land in this community that has trees on it. And I can tell you, as a county, we went and bought a bunch of property for ills, and there was an environmental sensitive program, that acquired a bunch of sites. So, between all the different agencies, and state, and county, and school board, and all that, we've got trees, if you don't want to go stand in the middle of the bridge and look west, you'll see it. I'm just telling you that development is hard as, as it is, and it's very difficult, and I know you, as elected officials, you only get to hear from people, well, I'm a business owner, I live on the river, I care about my grandkids, but I'm telling you, don't make development any harder. I own a piece of property in town that I think that this ordinance would affect drastically. And between the wetlands that we have in this community already in North Bay Harbor, it also, it, it ties up, makes it hard to, to do. And so, wasn't planning on speaking, but Mayor, I know you said you don't get to hear the other side of it. Well, you've got a business owner, investor, who spent eight years trying to make sure that Titusville wasn't the armpit of the county, and tried to get it developed, and move development up here, and we finally got it going, and this ordinance will slow it down. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And that was the last card?
Yes.
All right. First of all, I appreciate everyone for speaking, I appreciate your passion. I would say, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, and I won't say it at the risk of anything, I'm just going to say it. Just because someone works at a veterinarian's office doesn't mean they love their dog any more than I love my dog. So, what I'm trying to say is, and, and most of you aren't, aren't there, but there are, there's a, there's a few people out there that feel like if I'm not standing there with you, or sitting out there with you, or speaking over there, I don't love trees like you love trees, I reject that. Enough said. Anybody else got anything to say? All right, we don't get to vote on this, we don't pass this, we do that later. Tell me that, tell me the date on that.
Your next meeting is the twenty-fourth of August at six-thirty. Yes, sir.
And we'll all be here again. We'll all be here again. All right, before I decide if we're going to take a restroom break, what do you got left?
We actually have two, three, three items and reports.
I'm going to do five minutes, five minutes, I've got, I've got to use the restroom, five
We actually have two, three, three items and reports.
I'm gonna do five minutes. Five minutes, I gotta use restroom, five minutes.
We are now, sir, on old business. The first old business item is 11A, which is the American Rescue Plan Farmer's Market Memorandum of Understanding with the Greater Titusville Chamber of Commerce. City Council, at their July 13, 2021 meeting unanimously approved the plan for the city to partner with the Greater Titusville Chamber of Commerce for the chamber to operate the farmer's market utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funding and directed staff to draft an agreement with the chamber to operate the farmer's market. MOU is attached for the city council's review and approval. CRA reviewed the MOA, or MOU, at their meeting previously and recommended approval. And this is also subject to the third-party auditor's review.
And thank you for always saying that. That puts it all in perspective. Staff?
I can answer questions, but I have nothing to add.
Counsel? Wow, it must be getting late. Everybody's quiet. All right, let me have a motion then?
Move for approval of the American Rescue Plan Act for the farmer's market.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Jordan, a second from Vice Mayor. Roll call vote?
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson? Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yeah.
Motion passes unanimously. City Manager?
Onto new business, this is item 12A. This is American Rescue Plan Act Low Income Housing Tax Credit Development Application Funding Request. Neighborhood Services Department received a request for funding from an affordable housing developer who is applying for annual Florida Housing Finance Corporation Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program for vacant property located at 2001 South Street. The developer in application is seeking the local government area of opportunity designation and goal, which requires a commitment from the city in the form of a grant or a loan of $460,000, oh wait, $460,000 at application, demonstrating its high level of interest for the project. Although the local government areas of opportunity designation is not a requirement to apply for tax credit programs, it provides the project preference for tax credit funding over non-opportunity designations. Should be noted that the city is open for applications for projects through the Florida Housing Finance Corporation Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program at any time. Currently, the requested project is the only application which has been made to the city. If approved by council, staff would commit $460,000 of the city's American Rescue Plan Act grant funds to this project, which would preclude staff from entering into other affordable housing development projects for funding consideration under the city's current ARPA budgeted program. However, should the application not be accepted or funded by HFC, the commitment will become null and void, and the Neighborhood Services Development will advertise the availability of funds for the same purpose through the Florida Housing Finance Corporation Low Income Tax Credit Program. The applicant is aware that the final approval of these funds will be based on review of a third-party auditor for compliance with ARPA guidelines. The Neighborhood Services staff has reviewed Forest Glen's proposal and finds that it meets the intent of the current American Rescue Plan Act program guidelines, as well as the city's housing goals and objectives found in its community development block grant five-year strategic plan. Staff is seeking council's direction on the commitment of the full $460,000 of ARPA Affordable Housing set-aside funds for this project and the authorization for the city manager to execute the Florida Housing Finance Corporation Local Government Verification Contribution Loan Form if approved.
Miss Staff?
I really have nothing to add at this point. I'd be glad to answer any questions that I can.
I hope somebody has a question for you to stay this late. Anybody think of something? Counsel, Member Stokel? There you go.
Have we done this before? And if so, when was the last time we submitted something like this?
We have contributed to low-income housing tax credit programs before. Park Villas was our last application. That was funded through our state housing initiative program, our ship grant program. Because of the reduction of the ship grant program over the last 10 years, we haven't been able to fund any projects.
Okay, thank you.
And that's your only question? Counsel, anything? All right, I look for a motion. No, I don't see it.
I'm very pro-housing for the people who are economically disadvantaged, and I think that that number is going to continue to grow. And we have to be, as a city, we have to be prepared for that. And I also follow the government and all their wise decisions as well, and I know that they have a lot of money that they've allocated to these particular projects. I mean, these particular individuals to help people to get recovery, to recover from COVID effects of COVID-19. And there's not a whole lot of movement in a lot of cases of those dollars. I'm very saddened that this is the only project that has come before the city. But, and I've done some things that, and I've asked some questions about the population and who will be served in this, the area median income, and it looks good there. I like the location of where they potentially, where this is going and access to transportation and so forth, and it's got to meet all of those requirements. And so, I, and I go forth with, you know, and I'm very tight on spending money. I'm not, I try not to favor anyone, one side or the other. I try to look at the facts. And I, my thoughts and what I know about housing and everything as far as serving the population that this is going to serve, I'm totally in supportive of moving forward with this, and I, and I hope that we get an opportunity to do more as we go forward.
Now, Member Robinson, just to follow up on doing more, we've only gotten our first installment of American Rescue Plan dollars. We'll get the next installment in 12 months now. So we will most likely, 100%, be putting more money set aside for low-income housing and affordable housing.
We're setting aside, keep me from reading all this again. How much, how many dollars?
$460,000.
$460,000, and you had allocated how much?
$462,000, I think.
Almost, okay. All right, gone. And so, we got some more things coming down the road.
Very good, Member Jordan.
Thank you.
Okay, but time now, so.
We have two cards.
Call the cards, please.
Just ignore me.
Jason Larson.
All right, call the cards, please. Unfortunately for those people, we do one-minute segments after 10 o'clock. I guess. Name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Jason Larson. Address is 19 Laurel Luke Circle, Duquesta. I'm with Housing Trust Group, or the developer for this proposed development. And we just wanted to thank you for considering this item. You know, as we all know, there's a big need for affordable housing these days. And this loan commitment will go a long way in helping us apply to the state for $17 million in tax credit financing to develop 90 units of attainable housing here, you know, affordable and mixed income. And, you know, answer any questions you've got. And again, just, you know, thank you for considering this.
I do have a, Greg, Jason, and I know that you're applying for the tax credit. And if, if you don't get them, you're going to, and this is part of your question for yours, Terry, that that money becomes unobligated if it's not approved? Okay. And if I'm remembering correctly, we can go back to the tax credit pool every year?
Yes, sir. So we're gonna make our application August 26 to the state. And we should know, you know, they have an appeals process, and, you know, we should know for good by April of 2022 if we're funded. And, you know, if we're not funded, then yeah, the funds are deobligated and you can, you know, seek other uses.
Member Robinson? Oh, wait, you already went.
You're getting sleepy too.
I wanted to make sure what microphone he was on. And you don't have a question, right? Okay, we're good. Thank you so much. And again, I appreciate you staying here till 10 o'clock for that minute and a half. Next card, please.
Stan Retsch.
Stan Retsch, 3605 Sparrow Hawk Trail, Men's. We do own nine or 10 properties inside the city of Titusville. Can I have an extra five or 10 minutes, do you think?
No.
Just kidding. I'll be real quick.
Tomorrow morning at 8.
Right, perfect.
Be there.
So the need is obvious. I don't need to go into that. It's not only low-income housing, it's workforce housing, it's transitional homeless housing. But as y'all know, I'm a finance guy. So if you look at the numbers, it's really a no-brainer. It's an investment by the city. If you do, it's not a grant, it's a loan, 15-year, 15-and-a-half-year loan, $460,000 that will be repaid to the city. You're taking a vacant piece of property, putting an $18 million project on there. They are assessed at lower value than typical because the rents are lower based on the income approach. So even a value of $5 million assessment is gonna bring in $36,000 per year in taxes to the city at 7.2145 bills. 15 years is $541,000 of additional tax revenue, and you get your $460,000 back, plus impact fees, tap-on fees, permit fees. So purely from a financial standpoint, it's a win. It's almost arbitrage. You put in the money, you make money on the deal, and by the way, we solve a very, very big need in our community. I would ask, and I don't know the mechanics of how the staff or council would do it, but if through the audit or through the American Rescue Plan, for some reason, they found that it didn't qualify, that the city would commit to use other funds to make the project happen? It's a great idea. It's yet another investment. And again, I don't know the mechanics or procedures, how you do that, make that provision.
How many get back to him?
We'll get back to you. I mean, seriously, I don't know that's a question unless you have something you want to say on that. It's not a question we're prepared.
We don't, we don't have any.
No, we are not prepared to answer that.
I understand. But it is a really tight timeframe. Their application has to be in by the 26th, so that's all I got. Thank you much. Any questions?
Can I have clarification? That's the first I've heard, it's a loan. I mean, this is a grant itself?
The, the report to council is, they have the option of either a grant or a loan. Staff recommends a loan that we can regenerate the funds.
That's correct. And Mr. Larson?
Loans, man?
And Mr. Larson has, they presented all along from the very beginning, it's a loan, low-income rate loan, but a loan.
Yeah, and I guess my, this will be a question for the auditor, but that money has to be spent in three years. So if it's a loan, I'm not sure the mechanics of reallocating that.
If you had to make it a grant, I'm sure he'd be okay with that.
Yes, he would.
That's my thought. That's my thought, yes.
The main thing is to get the, get the approval to be able to sign the letter to the company, the application.
Mr. Retsch is a bottom-line guy. And I'll tell you what, you threw out more numbers out there than I could even, at 10:15, that I could even hear.
Trust me, it all works.
I'm telling you, that's impressive. That's impressive, thank you.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay. I have the cards. Okay, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you very much. I move that we direct staff to allocate, allocate $460,000 of the American Rescue Plan to fund the proposed Forest Glen Low Income Housing Tax Credit Project. Do you need anything about grant versus, because it really needs to be a grant because we have to spend it, so.
That's my, that's my opinion only, but I know by the current rules of ARPA is that money has to be spent in three, a three-year period.
I'm not the expert, but it doesn't sound like a loan was.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
So it's a grant?
No.
Okay, Member, hold up one second. Member Stokel?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I feel like it will be spent if it's a loan, so I, if the auditor's okay with it, I.
Yeah, but then you're regenerating money back into the system that I believe is.
It's supposed to be spent.
Yes.
And if it's coming back, it's not really being spent.
But then you could argue when we give out other money that they say they regenerate some income to the city in theory.
This money has to be allocated.
Right.
Can we make that motion and then if it needs to be clarified, we can get it clarified? All right, make that motion, please.
It'll be a grant, but if ARPA allows for it, it can be a loan.
And my concern is, by the time you guys get your tax credit, this 460, we're encumbering that money until the project's complete.
Right. Complete?
So, you know, we're, I don't know that your project will.
So, hi, Jason Larson, Housing Trust Group. You can fund sooner than, we just proposed that you could fund as late as three months after the certificate of occupancy, but you, you can fund earlier. You know, you could fund that closing if you wanted to. And as far as a loan or a grant, I mean, we, you know, starting off with a loan and then it's fine, and if we can, ended up converting it to a grant for some reason, I mean, that still meets the Florida housing rules. But like, if you signed the loan form now, then, I mean, it would, you know, it's fine for Florida housing. Sometimes we'll start, actually start with grants, and it can have some tax effects in the tax credits, because it's a, you know, an IRS thing, and the investor, tax credit buyer will actually want us to convert it to a loan. So sometimes that happens. And then there's some funds that are grants to municipalities and nonprofits that we take as loans. I think home funding, I think, is one maybe that works that way. So it's, I don't think it's uncommon. Of course, you can check with your auditor, but, you know, it's not uncommon to, for a city to get grant funds, loan it, and then get it back. And some of the federal agencies encourage that because then you've got recurring funding, you know.
I understand that, but this is specific money that we're using that has a specific timeline.
And we're gonna have an auditor decide if we can do it or not.
Yeah, so either way works. I mean, if we started off with a loan and something happens, you had to do a grant, then that's fine.
All right, so City Manager, how do you want it worded? Grant or loan?
I personally would like to go with a grant upfront.
All right, let's word it as a grant, go. Thank you.
I did.
All right, I just need a second.
Just one question.
Member Robinson?
Scott, this money has to be gone in four years?
Yes, sir.
That's an important thing to remember. It has to be gone. And that's all 8.7?
8.7 million, but there's also. There's provisions that have been written in. We haven't gotten all the final rulings yet, but there are some provisions that go beyond that timeline, but you have to apply for those provisions.
If the project in progress and has a finishing day. If the project in progress and has a finishing date.
And the word "gone" is what makes me wonder if it could be a loan. I think it needs to be a grant.
Yeah.
Gone. All right, I have the motion. And do I have a second?
Can I ask a question first?
You may.
So my thought is, if it's a loan and it's repaid within that four years, and we use it for something different, then it's still gone.
But I think in a perfect world, the project won't be completed in that amount of time.
I will do a second.
Member Stokoe, do you have, excuse me, do you have something to say? You were seconding.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that moving forward, we're going to be working with them and what the rules are to make sure that we're not doing something that then hurts them, and then we're spending something and throwing money out there when we can use it on something else. To me, it seems very unclear for me, but I don't feel very comfortable at this point. Like, I would like to have a little bit of clarification on what we're doing exactly.
That's my concern. From the final rule that staff has read, the U.S. Treasury has made it very flexible for local cities to utilize the funds as they deem fit for affordable housing. It just says affordable housing. And if you go by affordable housing, you know, it meets the definition of affordable housing. As far as the tax credit application, the Florida Housing Finance Corporation doesn't care where the money comes from. It can be general fund, it can be another grant, it can be, you know, that side of it, there would be no issue. The only side would be for the auditor to confirm that it would be an eligible use.
Do we have a timeframe on when the auditor could potentially look at this?
You, you will have the auditor's contract at your twenty-four August meeting, and that will be the first item. We're probably going to give him that item prior to, but they won't be able to work on it until the twenty-fifth.
And their deadline is the twenty-sixth?
Six, yep.
On the paperwork, is there a provision where we could amend, whether it's a loan or a grant, after this paperwork submitted? So we sign off on it now, and then we could, and that might be, I don't know if, Jason, you might know that. It will just make me feel a little bit more comfortable before I vote, honestly.
Hi, Jason Larson, Housing Trust. Yes, like, let's say we started off with a grant and we changed it to a loan later. I mean, that's, that works for Florida housing. So we, when we make the application, we just evidence this commitment one way, either by signing the loan form or the grant form. Both qualify for the LGAO designation. And then if it changes before closing, then that's, that's fine.
And you feel comfortable, regardless of which one it is, that you could make the project work?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. We could, we could make it work. There will be a first mortgage lender on the, on the property, a permanent mortgage lender. And one of their requirements, they'll have a fifteen-year loan. Just one of their requirements on your loan is that it doesn't come due before theirs. So, you know, the, the term would be like, you know, fifteen years and six months, you know, from, you know, from the property being constructed. If, if it came in at construction, then it would be, usually there's a two-year construction period plus a fifteen-year perm period, so that'd be a total of seventeen years. And then usually they'll want like an extra six months on subordinate debt.
And then my last question, maybe for staff. If for some reason we find out from the auditor, we can't do a loan or a grant, are we now bound by this agreement? Or is it only pending if we can use these dollars?
Staff has made it clear to the developer that it is a contingency upon the auditor's approval.
Okay.
Correct. So your motion should include that.
Okay. All right, I think I'm, I'm good.
Let me, let me add to that, though, and correct me if I'm wrong. We've, we've made a lot of votes that are pending, auditor. This is no different than that. I mean, we made a lot of votes on this.
I just want to make that clear on the record that we're not committing, because this is a signing of paperwork rather than us agreeing to something.
We're not going to sign the paperwork until the auditor is confirmed.
Okay. But don't they need it signed by the twenty-sixth? That's two days?
The, actually, we can read, you can read the language in the form, but I think the form, it's not like a, you know, firm, firm commitment, you have to do it. And obviously, any, any funding that we use has to comply with all the, you know, federal and state rules. So, I mean, I, I suspect that you can use the ARA funding for this. I mean, we would like to see if we could have a definitive answer from the auditor by the time the application's deadline comes along. So even if you sign the form tonight, I mean, we would want to try and get, you know, a firm answer from the auditor, just so that when we apply, let's say we get funded, you know, one of our competitors, when they, when we get to the appeals process, they might look at the agenda item and say, hey, this is contingent, and, you know, it's not a real, it doesn't count. I, I mean, I think we could argue that it certainly does, but it's always better if you have, you know, the auditor said no problem by the twenty-fifth.
Yes, I just want to make sure that we're not committing to something before we actually.
Well, I think anytime we vote on something that the auditor still has to approve, we, we're simply moving it on with our approval, but not anything, anything, and that's been said several times tonight.
Yes, sir, that's contingent upon the auditor's acceptance.
So I don't feel nervous about approving it. It goes through the auditor and then if that make it, that make it. So this is an approval pending.
Is it, that I, that I hear you say, you're looking for a signature tonight?
Well.
Because, you see, because that's, you see, because that's what I heard in my, you know, my good ear.
So, I mean, we can look at the language on the form, but, you know, typically what would happen, let's say, let's say you sign the form tonight. We'd like to hear if, if your resolution's going to be contingent upon the auditor saying okay, then we, we really want the auditor to say okay before we submit. So you could sign tonight, we, we submit on the twenty-sixth, if the auditor said okay by the twenty-fifth, then I think we're fine.
Now that I'm the guy signing, I would talk to city attorney. I didn't hear anything about signing.
No, sir. The request tonight is for council to authorize allocating or setting aside the funds to the project.
With no signature?
With no signature tonight.
Yeah, and I don't know if you guys have talked about that, because it sounds like you want a signature, and we're not expecting to do that. I certainly am not expecting to do that until the auditor, I'm not signing anything until it's approved by the auditor. Voting yes here means I approve it, let's move it forward. Signing it means we're done, we've agreed, and we're legally bound. I don't want to be legally bound, and the city, city manager agreeing with that, we will wait on the auditors.
Yeah, yes, sir. And as we entered into the American Rescue Plan, the third-party auditor, every program that we were bringing before council, every penny that we're spending is going through this third-party auditor.
Absolutely.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody? Okay, member Jordan?
Yeah.
As long, as long as we get the form, let's say on the twenty-fifth, it can be scanned to us?
Yeah.
And then we can, we're submitting the application electronically. So as long as we get the form, let's say.
And I'll let you guys deal with that, but when I sit down to sign it, I, obviously the auditor will have seen and approved it. There we go. Go ahead, sir.
Please, I'm going to clarify this thing so it won't be a problem at all. We're asking to have staff to, to allocate the four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for this project contingent upon the approval of our auditor. That's it. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokoe.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. City manager? We are at petitions and requests, correct?
Yeah, council, if you, if you could, by your rules, you're going to have to vote to extend.
How long, five minutes?
Oh, oh, yeah, we're going to, let's go, I'd say ten. Thank you. Let's go till, what is that, ten, ten forty?
Ten forty.
Okay, there's a motion. Second, all in favor? Yes. All opposed? All right, we're going to ten forty.
Onto item twelve B of new business. This is the Historic Property Advolorum Property Tax Exemption Code Amendment. It's been brought to staff's attention that the city's Historic Property Advolorum Tax Exemption Code requiring applications for historic property advolorum tax exemption be submitted prior to any work being started is not consistent with the Florida Administrative Code. The Florida Department of State was directed by the Florida Legislature to adopt rules for the implementation of advolorum tax exemptions for historic properties. The rule on submittal of applications was revised to permit the submittal of applications for historic property advolorum tax exemptions either before, during, or upon completion of the improvements. The wording was added to the rule that strongly encourages property owners to submit applications before construction is initiated to secure the preliminary project approval. And staff's here to answer any questions that you may have about this amendment to our historic property advolorum tax.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Saka? Member Robinson?
Yes, did I hear, again, in my good ear, and I read it, this is not a, a usual process, it's normally done at some other stage of the process.
What our code currently says is, in order to apply for this tax exemption, you have to do it prior to the project. And what the Florida statute now says is you can apply before, during, or after. So we're adjusting our code to that.
Okay. Member Jordan?
Do you need a motion?
Wait, do we have any cards? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move that we ask staff to provide a visibility on amending the Historic Property Advolorum Tax Exemption Code.
I have a motion for member Jordan.
Second.
I have a second for member Stokoe. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson. Member Stokoe.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yeah.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes, motion passes unanimously. We move to petitions and requests from the public.
And again, just to remind council, we've tabled items twelve C and D to your five-thirty presentations meeting on the twenty-fourth, and we are now to petitions and requests from the public.
And that's why we're petitions and requests. I even, I even caught that because you said we're not going to do that, and I don't see anybody left to do it. You sent them home. All right, petitions, requests from the public? Well, don't not talk if you. You sure? Are you good? All right. Go ahead, city manager.
You're now to your mayor's report and council reports.
Counsel, anything?
Oh, my God, say, thank you for addressing the COVID tonight. Yeah, I think you may have to do that at the beginning of each meeting, but I know.
I hope not, but you're, it hit me, I was thinking about doing it, it had you in the back of my mind, because clearly I'm going to defer to you, I think it's proper, but I certainly would have my say. Quite honestly, I felt compelled as a mayor, and certainly, I'm not, I'm half kidding, but I'm half serious about, folks, a lot of the people that aren't doing this are these high school players and a little older, and they're in the weight room lifting, but they're not taking the shot. And I really, I know too many of them. So with that, I won't use any names, of course, but that being said, and then when we got a chance to talk to George McCarterian, I was, you know, I was like, you know, I'm sure city manager was the same way, it's like, wow. So, and on top of all that, and you did the same thing, what a great job they do.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't say that enough. It's, it's not enough to say it. So anyway, thank you.
I will say, when you started talking, when Robert started talking about it, I looked out there and there were people putting their masks on. Yeah. So it did happen.
I better sure as heck wear mine out of here, because I, I, but I really have started doing that.
That was encouraging, so thank you.
Anybody else? Member Stokoe?
Yeah, real quick on that. I did want to say thank you for bringing it up. I know, I think it was when we talked, Scott, you'd said, like, the, I don't know, I think it was last week, the vaccines were up, surprisingly, from the pre.
Yeah, the health, the Varey County Health Department gives statistics that several updates, and they doubled the number of vaccines that they had. But, I mean, that's great, but the number was still quite low from the previous period.
So I think it does help, though, as long as we keep spreading the word, like, I'm still, I like, try to put it out there, tell people that I've taken it, it's like, I feel like now more than ever, I feel like people that have been hesitant are now, I've seen them posting it on Facebook, they're like, you know, I wasn't, but now I am. So I think anything we can do, especially as elected officials, to try to help that and help the community, seeing those numbers, I don't know, it's just heartbreaking for
Well, that's why I wanted to say from, from here that, that I've, I've taken it.
me.
And I, and for the people who say, well, I don't need to take it because I already had the virus, I had the virus, and I took it, and I'm very glad I did.
I'm a little nervous about school going back now, and it's attacking the younger kids now, so.
That's, that's a concern.
I'm hopeful. Also, I did want to touch on, I saw you did the Baffle Box Tour, too. Hopefully you liked it. It's pretty cool.
I did the Baffle Box Tour. The Baffle Box Tour was cool. Yes, it was.
They're a lot bigger than I thought.
I would agree with that, too.
If I may, you know, I know you guys just got excited about that, but I'm more, kind of give you, this is just a garbage can advice, you got to be careful on the position you sit in and what you, what you say, because some, that can be misconstrued as a directive if you're sitting in the, in the right position. So be careful how, and you did, you did a good job.
I'm going to interrupt this at that moment very clear. There would be no.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor, I was, you didn't let me finish.
Oh, there you go.
I said that you did a good job at, at stating that it wasn't in any form or any fashion a directive or an order or something coming from your chair. And I wanted to clear that, make sure that in, in any time that you say that, that you make that, that, that very clear in, in advising people to, to do that.
All right, absolutely. And you know my world for thirty-five years in education, right?
Right.
You always have to be careful what you say, because what you say never goes home as you said it. That's the first thing. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, sometimes you got to step out and maybe, you know, and I will say the, the ending of our discussion, I, I talked a little bit about my pet, my puppy, you know, so I realize when you say some things.
I'm not just.
No, 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 I know you're not, I know you're not, but I'm just saying that there's two sides, because I've done this long enough to know that be careful what you say, and I would say be careful what you say on Facebook, be careful what you say on Twitter, be careful what you say anywhere. And in some cases, the less you say, the better. But in some cases, if you don't say something, you really, you know, we can all, the last guy quiet is the last man out.
I got one thing, one more thing to say, if I may.
Absolutely.
I want to give the Titusville Finance applause for Saturday at being at the giveaway for school supplies for the kids over at.
Gibson.
At Gibson, I applaud them, they were there showing out, and that, that was a very positive representation of Titusville and doing that, and I applaud that.
I guess I missed you at that one.
Yeah.
I came about noon, I think. Yeah. A couple times, a couple times, but I know, I kind of knew you'd be there. I would add to that, that this morning I went to five back-to-school events, meaning that waved to the kids coming in Imperial Estates, Madison, Astronaut, Titusville, and then went by Oak Park. They're pretty excited about that, and I will say, I take it as a compliment that at least three of those schools said they'd never seen a mayor at their school on opening day, so I thought that was pretty cool. And similar situation, it was, you know, with the students, and, but that was an excellent event, and you're right, and TPD, I need to say that, TPD and our fire department were spread out at every school. And when I was going down War Eagle Boulevard, and I couldn't get down there because of the backup, I just pulled off with the fire department about six blocks short. So, that's all I have, member Jordan? City manager?
Yeah, and just to dovetail on that, we do do quite a bit of traffic enforcement during the reopening of schools, in and around the school zones especially, so just wanted to pass that along. I sent you a PSA that we had published, and hopefully that word will get out, and people will be cautious around school zones to protect our children. The next thing I have, and this is an action item, the board of, the commission, board and commissions annual dinner, we've scheduled for October of this year. Given the spike in COVID and the age of a lot of our board members, I'm respectfully requesting council that we go ahead and cancel that event this year, and work on getting it on the calendar sometime in the spring if we can.
I would add to that, I, I might be the first one to have proposed that in, in our meeting, and the reason that came up was all of a sudden, our church attendance was down about half, and I had not even heard from Mr. McKeerian yet, I knew it was up, but I didn't know how much up. And, I mean, literally, we were down to almost coming back to church numbers, and then I looked at my calendar, and I thought, wow, I don't know if we're gonna put 200 or 300 people together. So I kinda mentioned it, and city manager was right there, probably already thinking about it, so I, I would be in favor of putting that off for no other reason than the, the safety and, and the example that we set.
Move to cancel.
Got a motion from member Jordan to cancel.
Second.
I have a second from vice mayor. Can we roll call vote that?
She was going home.
Member Stokoe.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Motion carries unanimously.
And my last is, tomorrow we begin the budget hearing, workshop, and then followed by the hearings. You have the read-ahead packet, the meeting begins tomorrow at 5:00 PM, and we will be in this format, with staff sitting behind us, we've got the microphones all set for that meeting. But that meeting, again, is the dialogue with staff as I run through the slides, to ask questions that you may have about the, the initial proposed budget. And subject to your questions, that's all I have. And we have one more item before.
City attorney?
Yes, sir. Under my report, as you may remember, we previously engaged attorney Thomas Cloud with regard to consent order and utility issues, he's with the Gray Robinson Law Firm. The engagement letter acknowledged that because of the size of the firm, the propensity does exist that they could represent a client which might present a conflict of interest with the city. The city attorney's office has been informed that attorney Paul H. Weinoff of the Gray Robinson Law Firm has a possible conflict in its representation of the American Charter Development owned by Village Charter Holdings LLC, who are attempting to rezone property at 1927 Knox McCray Drive in Titusville. That property's next to the old Publix where the charter school was, it's a vacant piece of property next door to there, that they are looking to help the developer or property owner rezone that property. I confirmed with the attorney that if council does waive any conflict in this firm's ability to represent them through that process, that will not extend to any litigation or adversarial proceedings. In other words, the conflict's only to allow them to process this, they will not represent anybody in any kind of litigation or adversarial proceedings with the city. And it's up to council whether or not you agree to waive that conflict and complete it.
Let's hear from vice mayor.
We talked about it the other day, and I didn't really have a problem with an attorney helping somebody process an application and getting it through the city. But when it came to litigation, I was like, yeah, no, no, so I asked Mr. Broom to go ahead and check and see, get some more information on it, so I personally-
Correct, the letter I received, sorry, tenor, the letter I received from the attorney says, per our discussion, this will confirm that we are not requesting that the city waive a conflict as to any potential litigation. If the matter should become adversarial, we would no longer be involved in the representation.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, so in that case, I wouldn't have a problem with, you know, attorney helping somebody get through the process of applying for zoning, rezoning, if it came to, we're having problems, it's looking like litigation.
Then back out.
Then, then, yeah.
Right, I would agree with that. Member Jordan?
If there's no other discussion, I'd like to move to-
Is there anybody else having any discussion?
No.
No further, no further discussion.
I did, and I was concerned, and I, and I think that that, that satisfies my concern.
Member Jordan?
I move for approval to utilize the attorney, right?
Is to waive any conflict of interest.
Waive their conflict of interest as stated by our attorney.
As stated by attorney, member Jordan makes a motion. I need, I have a second by member Stokoe, roll call, vote.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokoe.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Is that it?